In order, clerk's later, please. Kristi Norhuck.
Here.
Kristi Brissie.
Here.
Superintendent Westbrunse. Patrick Corstam.
Chair.
Kristi Shippely.
Present.
Kristi Nordick.
Present.
And clerk's later. Please rise and begin believing. Behind the scenes. And to one of the committee scans. One patient. And it is all the limits of the justice law. The motion for the motion of the agenda is. Clerk, to move with I, Kristi Shippely, supported by Chief Corstam, shall approve the agenda. All in favor? Host, motion carried. Article four, reviewing the plan of the zoning ordinance.
Just kind of give us a little quick rundown of how we're going to present this and then I'm going to hand it over. And your packets will see multiple recent copy that was published like this voting of the zoning ordinance. If you open up the binder in front of you, you'll see the agenda. Then you will see the staff review memo. And then the last documents that is on the left of the binder. It's proposed language to address the provision in section eight point two of the form-based code. The way that we set this up is we published a document on seven one. And allow the public to, or sorry, seven three, allow the public to bring any feedback. Additionally, some board members and staff members since have come and addressed other issues. So everything was in front of you today is the exact document that was published for the public on seven three with blue highlights indicating any proposed cases that we have made. So with that, I will hand it over to Chris to address our first section.
So as you'll note, in the memo, the first discussion item for tonight is an important one, and that is the residential density in the village as part of the form-based code. The original thought process of the staff and the committee was that the form-based code language is going to be tight enough that such a number one is going to be necessary. However, it pointed out that the way that ordinance was written actually opened kind of a loophole. And in order to correct that, we are proposing to establish a density cap of eight units per acre in all four form-based code districts with a caveat for very small lots. We, one of the things that the subcommittee talked about as a goal is for the building to develop organically as a series of small developments, not a big development by one developer building a whole building. It wants a very large building, but small parcel by parcel developments that all fit into a broader theme. In order to do that, we are going to see the development of lots that exist that are the fund of happening. At eight units per acre, half an acre would be four units. And thousand square feet would be two units, smaller than that, if you're getting down to only having one dwelling unit, which might not necessarily cancel out for, for just a developer to do a, say a storefront, a couple of to do a storefront in a single condominium above, you know, instead of a storefront in two, might be preferable. For that reason, we do have, we do have language about lots under twenty thousand square feet being allowed to have four units. The cap of four, regardless of how small they get. So we can talk about that policy, but that's the thought process behind it. Obviously, if you go to the other end of the spectrum, in large lots, that eight units per acre would protect against excessive density. Additionally, there was in the previous draft, the line about the planning commission being able to approve buildings over the cap of thirty five feet. That line has been moved. That was discussed when we had about, you know, some particular sites, that maybe a penthouse that could see the river would be kind of cool. Ultimately, that is probably too big of a door to open. So if in the light strap we've closed it, closed it, anything over thirty five feet would have to go to ZBA to try to get ahold of that. Yes.
Over a year ago, in the planning commission, we have, you were bringing up this eight units per acre thing. And we had brought to you six units per acre. Where'd that go?
So we don't have objection necessarily to six units, but the eight units does come from kind of the two, four, eight.
You give us any seats with over one acre lot in the village?
Yeah.
I think that that's.
If you give me a second, yes, I have a map on Andrew.
I think that it's important, at least for me, to visualize where this could potentially happen and what it potentially.
Sure. So.
Yeah, thank you.
That's not an acre.
Yeah, if you were to, actually, one of your lots in the village, the two outlots in front of Thornapple Center, so in front of the Foley. There's the gas station and the bank, I believe.
But those two combined?
No, those two approximately each are about.
So the gas station is like one acre?
The gas station's lot is about an acre.
You're suggesting eight units where the gas station is.
I don't think that's an acre.
I don't, that's what I'm showing on DAS right now, is that those would each be right, I'm not saying they're exactly, but they're right around.
Then, remember the other stuff I would put in for four, maybe code setbacks, pipe, all that other stuff? If we apply all the other stuff, would it still have room for eight?
I don't, I don't know. We'd have to do an analysis. It's possible, no. It's possible, because obviously you would have two meals setbacks, you have a thirty five foot cap, which is two and a half stories. Not going to get you a third full story probably. And you're going to have to fit enough cargo. And you, you know, so like, are you going to be able, oh, and the other aspect that goes in all this is the minimum dwelling size. Right? So all of that has to be put in a hopper and someone has to make it the design, which, by the way, this is the logic that led us to think we didn't need the number in the first place because all of that aspect is going to go into it and someone was going to be able to fit what they fit, and that's it.
You didn't remember what the memo was about?
Eight hundred, the one bedroom.
Yeah.
What else do we have at the township, eight hundred square foot homes?
Well, no.
You have, I would, I would venture that the townhouses in the, I think Centennial Park and its surroundings. If there are no, around that.
Number twelve per square foot each.
The gas station is one point two five acres, an acre or.
What is the, what is the base? Hold it next door to the thing, possibly, but here's the.
The bake?
I see an acre, I see one.
One point zero zero. They're building some minutes on regions that was one point two five.
Yes, sir.
What's driving the, I think this is what Timmy's asking. We're not hearing from residents. And it's the same. The planning commission was clear with you that they want to sit back then. Why does McKenna feel that we need eight? Is this just something you're trying to do it wrong all the time?
No, I, I would say to, well, let me start with this. I have no objection to six. If that's the overall board, then it's not.
You just said that there was a.
But there's a, yeah, there's a logic to, it is literally that it's a multiple of two. And you set up a building and you put a unit on either side of a hallway. And then you go to four, and yeah, you could go to six. That would, I, that's no objection to that. But then that's how you get.
Upstairs.
Yeah, then you would do, that's, that's how you usually lay out a building. So that's why it is really about that. It is not so much about, oh, we got to jam in this many houses, because I wouldn't, but we're also trying to get to remember that isn't jamming them in.
Right, I think when we do too, that should be too much. I mean, really, when, and again, this is just. Quickly, when we looked at width of the building, setbacks of the building, and we looked at United Bank. We had talked about the, the option there based on square, or the road frontage based on the new requirements was like two buildings. So they would take a design from the choices in the form-based code, make storefronts in the downstairs. So like, if I'm United Bank, I decide, you know what, I have way too much property here. People don't, we don't have foot traffic here, but we want to keep our sign-up because it's cascade. And the township wants to do that. They keep a small frontage up front in one of the buildings. They can build two buildings with the required form-based code with two condos upstairs in each building, which would be four. And I think that when we looked at the, the frontage on the road that would be allowable for that, I think that was the example that we came up with. So I think when you talk about, hey, am I right to spell?
If you're, you're along my, I'm following my.
Yeah, and, and so as a, as a subcommittee, we weren't necessarily looking at these maximum numbers or these minimum numbers or any of that. We weren't looking at actual lots within the village and trying to come up with realistically all this look within the village to put, you know, and to give opportunity places like the bank, that it would be awesome if they could do, you know, two cute storefronts. One or something in the bank state and another, and they did some, you know, high-end condos on the top, how that would look like. And I think that, you know, your point is very valid in that if we do want to just change the maximum number eight or six, I don't think that's a big deal. I don't think that's something.
Based on what you just explained, it sounds like four would be the right number.
Well. It just depends how deep the lots are. We looked at that one based on acre, but I think it has to do with the square, the road frontage is to how big the buildings have to be. So if you had more of a narrow, longer one, then maybe they could put six in because they could put maybe three buildings with two on top. So I think your point is very valid, and I think that if we want as a board just to change that suggestion to six is, that's, I think that's the idea of what we're doing here right now. We're seeking that feedback from everybody and saying that's changing.
Yeah, I remember a long, I remember a discussion and there was, there was a lot of thought put into it. Kind of, you touched on this, and I think he touched on this, and we brought up lot coverage. And when we dissected a lot in the village, there wasn't a lot of area left there with the height you were allowed to have a, a lot of, a lot of condo space there, if you will, living space. But on the flip side of that, I don't think we applied that same math, if you would, to a parcel like the Foley warehouse, whereas much larger. And, and maybe that's, and that's why I guess the cap is important, right? Because I think we, we were looking at it from the.
From like United Bank.
Small side of things.
Exactly.
He's looking at it from the larger side of, hey, wait a minute, look how big somebody could go. So I could, I can see that all you have from both sides. I could put a forty unit apartment complex.
For, for the context of, we're talking about this, if you want, let's have a little bit of the context of what eight units per acre would look like. I'm not saying that you have to agree with the design of the development, but two, seven, seven, one, Orange Street, which is the little, not Meadler Hall. Yeah, the Chicago units, around a two acre lot, they have seventeen units in that two acres.
Like on Orange Street?
Yeah, yeah. So that is the context of an eight unit per acre townhouse development.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
So that's the kind of density.
Yeah, well, let me just make, just make sure this is clear. The Foley is not ten acres. The whole Thornapple Center is ten acres.
Well, it's the section, it, it's the, it's the side that's Foley.
Yeah.
It's not the buildings that, that run these.
Yeah, not Thornapple Cascade, but the whole former, like, not just the Foley warehouse.
It wasn't a real Starbucks building, that's like two acres and then you have the other buildings.
So as a board, do we agree to six units?
Yeah, I kind of like, I ask a question. This is bigger and broader, Jay. With the Russian, like, so I don't think, like, it feels like we're trying to jam this thing in. This is my perception. Can we slow this down? Because I think we're just getting to density tonight. I think there's a lot more, and I think there's a lot of good stuff here. And like, I worry that jamming it through is going to put something there that the citizens may not like that we overlook. Is there some, it feels like there's something that's pushing it to happen fast, and I don't understand what that is.
I hope that's what you'd answer.
I'd like Jay to answer it, and then, you know.
I'll be honest, yeah, I'll be honest, why the, you know, it came out, made it move this long to get us to this point? Is because I started on September eleventh of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
And we were working on the master plan and then going right into this. And I heard nothing but master plan and zoning from the night there. There's no reason that it should take a community two years to get to this point. So to put the pressure on to get us there, force these conversations ahead of that. I sat in on one of my very first, it was my first work session with the planning commission to talk about zoning specifically at the township call. And I only made it an hour and a half, actually, because I don't think that anyone's ever going to be on the same page. So looking at the subcommittee, what was happening in those meetings, something had to happen. So you're like putting the timeline in place and getting us moving. There's no drop dead date that we have to do it. I will say the longer that we postpone it, the more we're going to get developments that we don't like now. We're going to get to the soon, we're going to get things.
What's a good acceptance criteria where everybody in this room says we're going to be forward, one way or the other?
Let's take it away.
Is.
I think, let me, let me answer your first question.
Yes.
I think as a member of the community, before I was on the board, we're hearing about the master, the strategic plan and the master plan and the zoning changes was something the community really wanted. I think that that was unanimous within the strategic plan survey that went out to the community, that the community has decided that this is something that needs to happen, that we want change, that we're afraid that stuff is going to happen within the community based on currently and what has happened in the past. And so I think as a member of the board, we have been pushing Jay to try to get this done. And I think a good leader pushes people and maybe sets expectations that maybe you can't need to get people to a point that you can get things better and get things moving quicker. And as a resident, I feel that we have the master plan. We've heard community feedback. We know where we want to get. It's just getting that final no bump up and getting there. And I, and I think we're, we're close and, and I think we all, there's, I think we're one, two, three, four, five of us that is down the planning commission. And I think we all agree that our current zoning is not great. And it's very hard as a planning mission member sometimes to make decisions because there's so many gaps or so many things that are missing in it. But we need them. We need it to be better. And we have developers pushing and calling every single day to the township, trying to develop some of the land within our township. And I think we need to get there. And I, on the example I'm saying, and I would like to see maybe doing these workshops for the next two or three weeks. If they're necessary. Yeah. If we don't get through it now, because I have a couple of things that I want to bring up tonight that, you know, I sat on the subcommittee, but these decisions are not the subcommittee's decisions to make. It is the planning commission's decision to re, you know, the job to review this and make recommendations. And ultimately, it's the board's decision to decide what we want. We are not all probably going to agree on something, which is fine, but that's, that's what the job is. And I think as a planning commission member, I am happy that we are sitting here as a board because as the board liaison, I don't want to represent all of us on the board when it comes to this kind of stuff. When this is serious stuff, it's going to go to the planning commission, come back to the board, and then what, then we tune up then, and then we spit it back to the planning commission. I think that the idea of doing these work sessions is the right thing to get the board's feedback before it goes to the planning commission. And hopefully, the planning commission will look at it and have some insight as well and some, some things that they want maybe tweaked or changed to. But that's just mine.
No, that's why I'm asking for acceptance criteria. I think the work sessions are great. And perhaps the acceptance criteria is really simple. Once we get through seven members giving their feedback, we have enough to bring it to the planning. That, that's all looking.
And Jay, has you not, well, and has you not, like, that forces to change to that timeline?
Well, I, you're, we're already, we're already off it.
Well, has you not tried to work this scheme for that deadline?
I, I try to understand.
Well, and so, and I think the, so there's a scary word that we keep talking that I, recently, I hear too. I get it. Like, density is a scary word for a lot of people. But unfortunately, when you are looking at village redevelopment, you're looking at things where you want this kind of concentration, it has to be set. But how much is a good, that's a good discussion to have. If, if six is the right one, look, I think we have to be realistic too, and I'm not a planner. But what I'm just saying is, in a village, if you don't put the density, you'll never have a village. You're going to have single family homes.
Have we asked any developers for their feedback on this?
Yeah. But it doesn't matter.
No, no, I, I think we're, the question's valid. Because why, why are we not asking to them?
It's not like for them.
So someone like Timmy can look at it and say, okay, I like this or I don't like this.
Okay, so here's the thing. We did developer day. It was with, it was a few days ago, oh, sorry, two years ago. And through the regulations, we had to lose exhaust. We had all these developers, the entire data, they might have cascaded, they talked about it. And you're all a bunch of jerks, right? Like, you're, well, not jerks, but they had different vision.
They're all telling you, you need it.
Yes. Breaking it down for a unit, blah, blah, blah. But what's their product, what's their product, um, product? Then at lunchtime, we're going to want bankers, because everyone's there in the network, right? And the lady's like, oh, they're all going to like, they're just stepped down. She's like, you're cascade. Everyone knows, everyone would love, every developer would love to be able to get into Cascade. And they, everybody knows that. They're all going to lie. She's like, but you guys are fortunate, you can hold out. It's not going to be just any developer. You guys are fortunate, you can hold out for like the right developers, right? And we don't have vacancies. We don't, we're not in rush. We just want to, it's not going to be.
We have any records that can help us with this? Want to help me with this?
Yeah, we already have one that owns the, the real estate group that owns Foley. And then he saw, yeah, there's opportunities, but everything's been cheap in the villages so far. And now everyone sees dollar signs, it's going to die cheap, and everyone sees, you know, the potential to sell big, but nobody, everything has been dirt cheap in the villages. Not dirt cheap, but inexpensive. It's not been done. So you're not looking for rush developers.
No, find one that you, that, again, frankly, that can, you said this.
I don't think we're going to get it, because I think what she said is actual, they're going to come in.
It's going to be the right, and he has people looking that people can, you need what?
I don't want as a consultant.
No, no.
No, I mean.
BDR guy there, remember when we, you saw this at the planning commission? When that Chicago fellow came in, wanted that seven acre.
I remember.
And that, and you, everybody, well, granted, they were all related to him, but BDR, one of the best.
It's not as loud as last night. High quality.
I, I concur with, like, what did developers develop? What did it demand, right?
Well.
No, is it going to develop whatever they can sell, any funding up? Right now, it is, it is residential, and it has, it's been commercial.
There's people.
It depends on the, I, I concur. That's what I'm saying, like, is there not as consultants that we can bring in and give us a guidance out of this?
We don't want that. We don't think.
So actually, we can provide that service, but you don't, that's, you don't have to, those.
You can get the people who built the lanterns, like.
But you can lay out.
I might say you have to do that. I love it if somebody who doesn't have that's in the area.
No, but the other reason, I think.
Give us objective, you know.
Yeah, if I put it just, I'll share. And Chris, that's, sorry, Chris had said this to us in a subcommittee meeting that we, based on what we have now, we are more stringent than ninety-nine point nine percent of the other communities around us. And that if somebody wants to come and build it, they will come and build it. If they don't, if our rules are too strict, then we will find out three years from now when nobody's taking the bait.
It's a lot of weight through your, I'm not saying that's a bad thing at all. I'm just saying like that, that's the cost, it's three years.
Yeah, we don't want.
It's okay.
If I make a suggestion, I don't.
We're not, we're not your guys' decision, but, you know, if, if we're worried about age and we want a minimum, the, the, the best we have to take is to go small, and we can amend the ordinance later if we find that we're getting pushback.
Yes.
We're not getting any development. I just, we'll talk over the Andrew, and I said, Rishi's building is, it's, everybody knows Rishi's building, right? You're doing a brand new remodel of it. It's on point six two acres, so technically you could get four units on there. A two-story building. How big is this building?
It's a little bit under a thousand.
So you're talking about eight thousand seconds of soaring divided by four, that's, those are two thousand square foot. Two thousand square foot building. But what I, I guess what I'm saying is just like to be, just.
Apartments.
Two thousand.
No, what I'm saying, when we, people mentioned.
You have, you got four eight hundred square foot.
No, but we don't, we don't have a building that fits that or a lot right now.
Well, at least you can go with the new.
We have.
So Timmy, actually, exactly, you're at, you're exactly right about this. Because to this point of Rishi's building, it's eight thousand, it's eight thousand square feet of commercial on the first floor. He's not proposing residential.
He's not.
Well, he could.
He could.
He could. And. Yeah, he could take that eight thousand square feet, knock off twenty percent for hallways, now it's seven thousand. For sixty-five hundred, then divide it by eight hundred, and that's on the units you could get, so about eight units, right? You put this cap on, now we get the four units, because they're going to be bigger. So I think that that's exactly what you're at, you see, is, is saying.
But that was.
That's what you guys want, is four bigger units, not eight.
Yeah, but that was like that.
But I, but I do want to say that what you guys also have sold as you want is that you want that second floor with the housing. Like, you don't want to ban that, you want to allow it. And so I, I think that maybe we are kind of closing in on something where it's like, look, it's, this is the type of thing we want, if it's, and this is the other thing I'm hearing from you guys, so frankly, this is wrong. What we're hearing, if it's not what you want, you don't want it at all.
Yeah.
We have the low development and bad development. You're not, you're not, we're going. So what they got is.
That's what she's saying.
I think it'd be a building study.
Do we limit this size of the units, the eight hundred square feet? Yes.
Maybe that's, maybe the number, it, maybe the one needs to happen, too, because that minimum needs to come up a little.
But then there's also a lot of other, maybe, there's also a lot of other limitations in form-based codes, or like, right?
Yeah, but I think it is worth knowing that on Rishi's lot, which I'm most familiar with, he could fit a building, it's eight thousand square feet of commercial and eight thousand square feet of residential. And so the question is, how many units do you want to take that eight thousand square feet and put it?
Correct, because we're.
And that's, yeah.
On the issue, per acre, it would be four. I think all is good, because if you said it, they're going to do what we allow. They will push against whatever we allow. And if we make it four and we find out nobody's building here, we can always forgive that, but if.
It enjoys.
The more you allow, they will, they will just push, push, push. Now, I think you ought to make it less, because you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube once.
You do, right.
That's my right, like, that's what the.
This is a half acre lot with an eight thousand square foot building on it, and the parking requirement is, he's already maxed out this parking requirement. So to put a second floor on there, he didn't have to go find parking, buy more land. So like, that's probably why we want to make it.
Well, and I think that's, that's an interesting point that I think, you know, it's not always that it's just about the numbers. It's about the other things that go along with the site and the development that you require, so.
And I think that, I mean, I feel like that's what the subcommittee really devoted.
So.
It was just about the numbers.
We're only on four of us.
Well, we're putting that out there just to make you feel good, because the regulation already makes it so they can't do that.
Well, then why even say it? In the SBI.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay, but you.
Well, I think, I think that's.
But that's how we.
I heard developers say like, put two forty unit buildings in.
Yeah, we, I would just. We question that.
Wouldn't be allowed.
Starting out our access drives and parking.
Dude, here's the thing, we don't, you're right to catch this sentence, and if elected officials are not going to be, it's not needed. There should be no maximum residential, like.
It doesn't sound like we.
Yeah, so just put it that way. And then, I don't care if we go down. What do you guys think? Let's talk.
I like four. I like four per acre. That's too small, but it's.
Perfect. That would cover Rishi too.
Yeah, that would.
Do you want?
Eight thousand, eight thousand.
Why do I need more? Those would be.
Because it's. And I think, I'm going to be honest, because can I say something to you that the subcommittee looked up to? When you talk about these abilities, and I'm no builder, but I, I do have somewhat of a brain. When we talked about, a little bit, your nerves, basically, yeah. But when we looked at some. We looked at, like, is anybody going to want to do this? Is it cost effective to a builder? And if you're telling me Rishi's building should be, we should drop it to four and they should allow two units in that building, nobody's going to redevelop downtown in the village. Nobody's going to do it, because it's not worth it. The only way it's worth it to put all this money in with the materials that are reimagined and everything, we're. We want high-end buildings. And we, our community has spoken also and said, we have a lot of people who are wanting to move out of their homes in Cascade, that have huge homes, that would love to be able to find a nice condo in Cascade in the village where they can walk and enjoy the community still, move out their homes.
They have done it for a little, it's just Cascade.
Right.
But like, I was, I can't believe how much. But like, I can't believe how much they go for.
Right, but if, if, you can't, no, nobody's going to develop if we say it's four per acre, or for per acre, we need to say that, like, it's not gonna happen, no.
Say that. Like, Teddy said that.
You do have an option here that you could do, which is to say, that if you have under twenty, just, we'll do a sliding scale. And less than half an acre, I get two units, but between half an acre and an acre, I get four, anything above that, I get four per acre. What you're doing is you're limiting the big people from real big.
Right.
But you're not limiting the small to something that's excessively small. Yeah, I, I, and the numbers can be tweaked, but this is my thought, just a, just a suggestion, given what we're talking about. Zero to half an acre. Two units, doesn't matter how big you are, you get two, that's it. Half acre to one acre, four units, so your Rishi size, or your United Bank size, you get four units. If I'm more than one acre, I get four units per acre, so once I get two acres, then I can do eight. If I have a hundred acres, I can do four hundred, no less than a hundred acres. But I can't do, but I, but, but the big ones are now capped anyway, they're, they're not, if you're doing six or eight.
So just in your math, going into that development, all that acreage in there with all the different little buildings and lots. How many units could possibly go in there?
You mean in the Thornapple Center or Follingus? Forty?
Forty units.
Yeah.
It's how many acres?
Ten.
But we're not talking about a forty-unit apartment complex, that's all others did.
No, there's two units, two, two units here, four units next door, six units over there.
You would have to really look at that based on the businesses, which we don't, we're not doing right now, to see if there'd be enough parking for all of that.
That's true.
Exactly, because the.
I would also see, you mentioned about this from single family. For all these units in that development. I, I didn't see it in, in the.
So you see, we're not gonna find the perfect bounds, but.
So I say, I gotta have an apartment or a condo.
Well.
It didn't come through, this is why you got Berbers, is because of that strategic survey. They want walkability, they want arcs, they want a connection.
They want a village area. So where are you gonna get a village area?
But if you, they're talking about it's like auto, what's that auto?
I'd be asked, where are you gonna, where's somebody gonna put a restaurant right now? If I can build a building and I can rent it out the bottom to a restaurant, and I can sell a couple condos up top, then I'm looking at making some money. But as a developer, I'm not gonna do anything now.
Good.
I don't think it.
Okay, if that's what you want.
That's what I want.
Okay, you want it to stay this way, you love Folling and you love the way it is.
Seven years. Let's see what everybody around us does, they're all gonna be disappointed with what.
But if you do it right.
We're not gonna do, I don't wanna do it right now, but this doesn't have to be done. For, for years, let's see what happens around us.
I'd rather have, then you know what? Can we talk about our zoning and.
I, that's.
Can we talk about our.
Not for me.
They would have to do something.
You have zoning orders right now, which is, if people own that property, build something. I don't, I don't pop my head what it is, but it is not, there's no.
Car wash or that, it looks like.
No, but. If I were current. If we want, you know, if that's what we want to keep, we can't say, and I'm gonna say this because it, it is something nobody understands. Nobody wants their neighbor's beautiful lot with five million trees to be cut, clear cut, and have a house put in there. But it's their right as property owners that they can do that, and whoever owns these lots around Cascade and in the village right now. Can look at our current zoning and decide, you know what, I wanna put another, um. Fix-it, automotive fix-it shop, and I'm gonna dump five million ugly cars in my back section that I'm working on, and I'm gonna have cars coming in and out, and I'm gonna do more grease everywhere, and that's what I want. They have the right to do that, and that's what our zoning currently allows. We can't say, you know what, everybody in Cascade, sorry you own all this property, but we're gonna sit here for three to five years and just see what happens.
Better even go.
Go active, you go buy all this property in Cascade and you can do this. If you own it, you can do it. So we have to do something.
Yeah, we do.
We want to do so. Point is residential and all of our commercials.
Well, then let's. Timmy, we're gonna disagree about the Folling Dollar Tree place and Old Twenty-Eighth Street, probably, if you don't want residential, I'd be fine with reasonable residential. Um, let's, if then we gotta talk about.
Can we address, sorry, I feel like that's gonna be a hell of an easier than this. So what if those were ever shouldn't like, come back?
Can I throw in an idea here that maybe, maybe can help settle some of this?
We're just gonna vote.
Kind of going on what, what, saying, what, what if? What if we just did something like, based on what I'm hearing, parcels. Three acres and under are two units per acre, and parcels over three acres are four units an acre?
No, it's.
Was it the other way around?
It gets smaller as you.
How about this, show of hands, show of hands, who would support some sort of residential, condos, whatever, in Folling Dollar Tree area? Oh.
Oh.
You can think of it.
I would if it's on a second floor, not on the main floor.
No, we're talking about, we're talking about mid.
If it, if it, if upstairs gas, if residential only.
No.
Sure, but slide scale, I like, me too.
That's genius.
The strict is, well, you should say no, the strict is.
I'm saying, I don't know, I, I'd like to see more feasibility, like, what? I hate writing something that wanted to be exercise.
See, I feel like.
It's on the border, I'm fine with it.
I think we've been, there's been so much, I just, I don't feel like we needed, I don't want, what, I can't think of some guy, a consultant would tell us that we haven't even. I think they've been hurt so long.
And, and no disrespect to planners, I know there's a few in the room, but. Planners, when they conduct feasibility study, they're all about urban planning.
Let's build stuff, that's their job.
I think that Cascade, like. Some experience, and I think Andrea does, I think Chris, I think that, um. Can't see a need, and I'm not sure that a feasibility study would have the time to show you what you want it, I don't think it's a bad idea, I don't know if you would get out of it though. But, um, I, I think the intent would not produce.
You might end up saying like.
So we're, you may not know, but those apartments that went in under the old leadership that completely blew the opportunity to do something cool. Instead allowed those apartments with a private drive right through them, up by Orange Street, um, just to the side of Folling.
True.
That's so on, yeah. How many are that, how many is that?
Exactly, for units per acre.
Okay, so making, that's. For units, so it does kind of have this little like retention pond, that you can't help.
I think it'd be high residential above.
Me too, but that thing is terrible, like, just, that's what we don't want, and that's what, eight? But that's terrible for multiple reasons.
Can you learn, can you go over there? The form-based code does not, only allows for residential on the second story, you have to have a storefront at least on the first store.
I don't know that we.
I think that's what I'm.
I, I'm actually trying to get some of that right now.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And if we have a confrontation where we want that at all.
You'd be limited to.
Especially right now.
In the village, I'd see it doing well, and you could probably see it doing well maybe in another spot, but along the way, I'm.
I agree.
One acres.
One thing we agree.
Yeah, right, so you know, you know, when.
Yeah, yep, um, I, I, I did confirm it, though it could be clarified, because it says that residential in the form-based code. That, well, put it this way, multifamily residential, form-based code, must be accessory to something else, which means commercial. Has to be, so that, that could be changed clearly in the language, but that is what it says. Um, if you were going to build a single-family. In the form-based code area, there are some areas where that would be appropriate, some side streets, that's permitted, you, you can do that. And if you were gonna build a duplex, use your two units, doesn't matter density, just two units, you wanna move by themselves, you need special use permit, so you can do that. So those are the current options for residential, if you wanna do any more than two, it has to be accessory to commercial.
Can you stay second floor?
Yes, that is what I mean by we could have clearer language.
Yeah.
Yes, because I think that the, actually, this is a discussion that a lot of communities have, should you allow like a rear, like commercial front, residential in the rear? You could, you guys don't want to, you don't have to.
I think that, I think we all agree to that, that's it.
Say it again.
If you're going to do mixed use in the village core area, it has to be a second story, not.
Density of.
We haven't gotten that yet. That's not the second story, because that already limits your score.
But we just need to agree to this part, because he's in that chapter.
Does it divide Old Twenty-Eighth Street also?
Yes.
If these.
Right now, we're going with the entire form-based code, we could make some distinctions between Old Twenty-Eighth Street or Cascade Road or instead of, but we're not, we're not doing that right this. We're not, so. Down to the west of the library.
And I'm just gonna say, now this is thrown it all there, I feel like mixed use with residential should only be in the, out of the two. Are called, the Thornapple Plaza and the. Just those two, not the four, so not the two down by Thornapple River Drive, they should only be allowed in.
Not E and W?
No.
That's, that's. We gotta come back to that too, you're right.
But just those two, but that's something that I think needs to be.
What do you call those, Chris? What area goes to?
So we have Core, which is, uh, Cascade Road, Thornapple River Drive, we have Bringe, which is actually basically this.
We are in.
Yeah, we're basically.
D and W.
I don't know if it crosses.
The library.
Basically, we're, right now, um, and then Thornapple Center, which is the Folling complex.
Mm-hmm.
And then Old Twenty-Eighth Street.
Yeah, so I think that mixed use should not be allowed in D and W, this section up here, or the one down by Thornapple River personally. Because I'm worried it would cause too much hate for the river, for those people who currently live there, but I think that it should be. Considered in Old Twenty-Eighth Street and whatever the Thornapple Plaza one is called, just those two sections of the village core. And then the others. The others could just be form-based code, but they have to be businesses or something like that, they would not be allowed residential.
So second floor.
Mm-hmm.
Next one to commercial.
But only in those two, just so the D and W plaza would not be allowed.
Add a density of.
We haven't gotten there yet.
I know.
Could we play baby steps?
Well, I gotta have the whole thing.
We gotta, you gotta. There can be changes as we're going.
You're baby steps at this point, now let's get to the real nut.
Okay. Uh, do you think anyone would touch it with four, Chris? Like, I don't even know.
I, I think, so four units per acre is, uh, I, I don't know if you would get residential on the big Thornapple Center lot. I do think, I do think, and this is just my anecdotal experience, not a study. He, I do think that someone would do four condos over commercial on one of those outlots, if you like. I think that someone, Rishi's obviously not, but I think that a model of Rishi's building, a real second story, but a fake one wants to. The, a real second story with four condominium residential units up there, I think he would do that for sure.
What about Old Twenty-Eighth Street?
Old Twenty-Eighth Street.
That are called because of our notice that have said we would love to have one or two homes above some of our buildings on Old Twenty-Eighth.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we'll see.
What size would those be, Chris?
Yep.
Uh, the Old Twenty-Eighth properties.
Or down.
What type, what size would the unit be?
Yeah.
Right now, we've got a minimum of eight hundred square feet, but, again, to, to the point of our Rishi's building, he'd fit eight thousand square feet of commercial, that was his priority, that's his business.
Yeah.
Right? The eight thousand square feet flowed from how big his cooler has to be, and how, how big most business to be. If he was built second floor, he'd be like, I got eight thousand square feet to play with, and we'd say, you get four units, and you'd be like, oh, I guess they're all gonna be around just one, two thousand square feet, well, oh. Because that's what I got space for, because I, I built the building based on my commercial, right?
Those would be nice, you know, where you don't have a spot.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Well, and, and I think, yeah, with, you know, when we talk about, when we talk about the strategic plan survey and different things. I think when we talk about walkability of a village area, nobody's gonna walk in the village unless we have some residents that are there walking the village already. And I think it just starts promoting a lot more, and it promotes all the things we have issues with, traffic issues, you know, all of these things just start. Coming together more when we start having more people.
How many people walk in there, I don't know, the building right there on the hill?
I have no idea.
Right there, in the village.
Yeah, yeah, thousand, that's three, it's like, stop, and now they wanna be.
Well, and, you know, a lot of restaurants, so they have to walk to, I mean, they, they could walk right down the hill to J T's again to, um, first, yeah, first walk, and we wouldn't, no, because you don't really see that.
They're really good, though. They're really good.
J T, I could walk, we all agree with that, we just don't even walk, and like, we just drive.
Yeah, but all, we're all hypocrites, we just drive.
I've spent enough time on the planning commission to know that whatever that number is that we pick, it's, it. It happens, it's always going to push it, right? I mean, you can come up with four acres, four units per acre, or you could say twelve units per acre. The allocation is always going to be one or two units more than whatever we pick.
And we don't want rapid, we don't have like the Fox or being in or anything. We don't want rapid, like, fourth, it's not, I mean, there's enough other groups for them to go through to meet form-based code and all the other requirements. What's the density of the lanterns, you know?
There's ten acres with eighteen, I think it's about one acre per unit that they have to stick. And face on, very good.
Um, where we have, where we have high density is in the, in the southwest corner of town. So it's less than two units in a lantern, down on the side of the airport.
Yeah.
And some of the Centennial Park condominium district is pretty dense.
So I don't think property, but property now, twenty-eight, uh, the. Those are all, what I'm getting at, they're all half acre. The neighbors put in that development, and they made money on it, at less than two units an acre.
Yeah, wait, what was it?
The neighbors put in that development, at less than two units an acre, and he made money.
Well, it's Chris, it was, Chris, he was like, one of the first condos, it's very rapid, near the, um, near the school, like, are they two or three story brick ones?
Yeah, um.
What do you think though?
So that's, that, so I, thought I was a straight up. No, I, I, so that, those are very interesting, because some of those are single-family homes, and I would guess that if you took the whole, all of those, those blocks that go south of Gaslight Village. They are well over four units per acre, because they're single-family homes on like a ten acre.
I can't imagine.
No, I'm talking about Crosswell Street and Badger Street.
Yeah.
I've got nice little fucking Jersey. However, a couple doors south of Jersey Junction is a ten-unit building on like, a quarter acre. It's like forty units per acre. And I will say, and I'm not advocating for you to do this, what I'm saying is, A, you wouldn't know it was there unless you knew it was there, because the front of the building looks like two single-family homes. It's only if, when you see it from the air, that you realize it actually wrapped back with a horseshoe, but it looks in the front like a single-family homes. And those units are over a thousand square feet, and they all have an enclosed garage, and they sold for a million bucks. So, I'm not advocating that you guys want that, I'm just saying that this is a thing that exists, and, um, well, and actually, this, to my point really here is. That the density number is not determinative of quality.
Mm-hmm.
That thing is, blows the roof off of de- of density, and is quality, at least for them, right? They have a little different vision of what they want, Gaslight Village, or what you guys do, it's fine. Um, you know, you could have, uh, something that is well within your density, but does not meet your quality demands, which is why you have another ten pages after that line of what you actually want, right? Um, and, and, and so I think there's something to that, I would also just point out, is if we think about density, just try to conceptualize these numbers. Four units per acre is quarter acre lots, if you're doing a single family. So if you have, you have neighborhoods in this community that are quarter acre lots, that's four units per acre. So, and again, that's not what's gonna happen here, it's gonna be more clustered together than that, and your overall. But, but the total density of the entire village, if you put this cap on it, is gonna be the same as a single-family neighborhood, quarter acre lots, takes the same amount of space.
So think about Watermark, minus the, of course, four units.
And then we're talking about the village core right now?
Mm-hmm.
Or really anywhere, if you put a four unit cap on it, and, and I, and I, to be honest, I'm, I. Again, I definitely don't have a vote, but I, I see the logic, because I see you guys worried about paying the big lots, how many units is that gonna explode into once you do that multiplication? And so, I'm more here to advocate for the small lots to be able to have enough to make their little tiny development of two to four units into commercial, actually make financial sense. Rather than here to protect the big developer from being able to do a hundred units instead of see.
But then you still bring in those small developers in the form-based code. But then you still bring in those small developers in the Form Based Code.
And they still have, again, another ten pages of stuff to me.
So if you, if you did that, if you made it on, if you, if you put limits on so that if you take the ten acre parcel and you have two units an acre instead of four. Is the outcome then that somebody takes the ten acre parcel and splits it into ten one acre parcels so they can go four units on each one?
Well, yeah, I don't think there are, I don't think the math should be done so that it benefits you split like that. But I do think the math should be done so that there's a, a lower limit at which we stop doing the division problem and just say you get two units.
Mm-hmm.
Or do you get four?
Yeah.
Right? It's, it's certain, because if it's like, look, I gotta, there aren't very many of these, but there are a few lots on there that are like. They're like five thousand square feet, so I get eight.
The weird little Thornapple ones.
The weird ones. And so. That's where you start getting into, you know, two units would be appropriate for that, but beyond that is not. Two units on that little parcel, sixteen units per acre and now we're.
What about the sliding scale that Chris brought up? So you're limiting the.
Mm-hmm.
Limiting the higher balcony, maybe too. What do you mean?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I don't want that on him.
You're like, do you like the sliding scale where it's a smaller, you get?
Well.
Or you just.
I wanna see it, I wanna see it up there.
I, I like the sliding scale if it's more broad than what he was describing. He was, you know, kind of like. Zero to a half acre, half acre to one acre. I like to see the sliding scale more along lines of zero to three acres. And then three acres and above, in my opinion, something like that, a little bit, a little bit more broad, because I think it, it prevents. Uh, the larger color still from being cut off to accommodate a higher density. Maybe I'm not, maybe if you're still on paper, I'll, I'll realize I'm wrong, but.
For existing lots in that village core area, I don't think that's gonna.
On Old Twenty-Eighth, your largest lot is two and a half acres. That's what the child, Chris, is. Is. It got. Right there. And most of that on the other side of the street are, are like six or seven. And it's like zero or three. How many, how many units would you put in where JT's is?
None, that's, that's what we get.
Exactly.
I'm gonna on the second.
What if he needs a second story for some condos?
Oh, that's, I think that. How many condos would you be able to put in there? On the second floor? I have, I mean, that lot. Eighty-six.
Under what assumption that we're doing four acres per unit?
No, we did this like.
Perfectly designed, that's point, that's one point two acres, that is that wooden lot.
So on a sliding.
So they would have two point, two and a half acres. At four units per acre? I don't know.
So that's, if, if that's what we're doing, that's ten units.
On two and a half acres.
Which, those, those lots on the south side of Old Twenty-Eighth are bigger than what I think.
They go back.
Go back. Not a lot of them, some of them go back here to west.
What are the potential units who we have on Old Twenty-Eighth?
Uh, I'm gonna do a little bit of math, but.
You know, he's, one guy says he's okay, dude, now I wanna do it, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
Excuse, it has to be mixed use, right?
It would have to be mixed use, so all the businesses, they'd have to be business on the first floor. So you're talking about, and again, not including parking. Not including parking, which you're gonna need for the business and the residents, separate, not separated, but added together.
Right.
But not intended to be added.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know, can we get a rough estimate of the whole number of acres in most parts?
The whole number of acres, all we have to do is. Try to do this calculation, you can't just have the number here.
And while you do the.
Oh, yeah, you probably could, yeah.
Here, they're close, we do eight ones there.
All that Form Based Code that we went through. Five.
Mm-hmm. And that's what I'm saying, plus the part of, and there's no. Except that's.
He's been from the township.
Yeah, lots of, lots. That's the priority.
Getting about seventy-ish, seventy-ish.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
Only here in, not that we want this, we don't, but we're trying not to have, the places behind Culvers.
Oh, geez, well, yeah.
I know, Chris, I hate it more than.
So we can put about seventy units at Old Twenty-Eighth. Everybody got on the bandwagon to their.
I hope you don't know, because we're talking parking.
But that is.
Six, sixty to sixty to seventy-five, somewhere in that range, you know, but yeah, probably get pushed down a little bit.
But it's not, you're not gonna get all that by the time you, all the other things come in.
I think it is important though, that those sixty to seventy-five units would happen over the course of eight to ten applications to planning commission. And would have been in eight to ten architectural and site plan reviews. But then, I think that's relevant, compared to developers showing up saying, I'm building sixty units.
Right.
It's not like they didn't do that in any commercial building.
And, and I'm not saying it won't happen, if we zone for it, you probably will, it's just gonna take that iterative thing and that would be one big.
What about parking on the second floor, half of it and another half? Units and you don't, not using that parking space, you can use it for units.
Are you talking about?
A ramp on the second floor.
Uh, you, you better be getting seven figures for those units you're gonna pay.
Yeah.
And it's plus thirty bucks a yard of space.
Yeah.
Probably expensive.
So, um.
I think that actually when you do the math, I mean, with, if you would have four units an acre just on Old Twenty-Eighth, you're gonna be looking closer to fifty.
If. The parking center, just based on average alone, not based.
Yeah.
And you have to realize, they have to have a commercial on the first floor, so nobody's going to spend. You know, a whole bunch of money to build a two-story unit, build condos if you have nothing store on the map.
So redwood?
Mm-hmm.
It's on ten acres and probably it's on this area under sixty units, so that's sixteen. But there's no commercial on the first floor.
And it's just one.
So that's, that's an example of six per acre, which.
Also violates totally every single provision of your Form Based Code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I.
Yeah. I hate it so much. I would campaign on no redwood.
Maybe then.
So then we won't worry about some of these properties.
Well, and that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing, if, if, if redwood at six units per acre, don't put, put that in the box, then.
But then much. And that really has the next thing, site plan.
Design. But then that's why we're doing the plug.
Yeah, well, then what we talked about is, is sliding scale, because I think once we get over a certain number of acres, we want to do less than four. Didn't you say two?
That was the idea, was that.
Do you know what I'm saying? We want something less once you go over a certain block range.
I didn't say that, but I would, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I, I said, I said, I said, and the minority units would be the, the sort of like, on a, you know, up to any amount of acres you get four units per. But if you guys wanted to say the sliding scale has another level.
Mm-hmm.
And which you come down again.
And that's where we go to like that three acres maybe, or we say nine acres or greater, it goes down to two. That one, I don't wanna see a huge.
Oh, you're creating opposite incentives.
So then the smaller places, the smaller lots that we have, they can do two and a half an acre, or if you said.
That's.
But then the higher they get, they can't do that, they have to have.
It slides up and then back down.
Yeah, like, are you?
You know what the developers always say too, affordable, affordable, affordable? The reality is, they just say that, but they're not, like, rent is not cheap, like, you get. It's behind acres.
I call.
Uh, not cheap, so it's not a dig on anyone who live, it's just a developer.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
They could.
To live.
Yeah, that's crazy. It's, yeah, so they, they always say that they're supposed to door, but it's not a castle.
There's no way they say they're a city dealership, not a true law.
Exactly.
You think that's it?
So, okay, give us a sliding scale that you said before, but do the over three acres.
Yeah, alright, so let's.
See where we're at.
To, to lay this out, to lay this out. If you have less than half an acre, and, and, we can always push an upper discussion, just throw it out as a concept. Less than half an acre, two dwellings. Half to a full acre. Four dwellings. I heard. One to three? Maybe we make that six dwellings, we don't do it per acre, you just get six.
Hmm.
And then above three, let's, and then, actually, I, I think the math works. Above three is two units per acre, the math works because at three acres, you get six. Right?
Yeah.
So then it's not, there isn't like a, oh, I actually want my lot smaller so I can get four.
If I have two, I'd get six too.
Yeah.
Right.
And that allows for, you know, someone like you should use their second floor effectively without blowing up.
Let me ask you that, how, how does this work then, when the guy comes in and says. You know, so, well, somebody have a, a two point seven acre parcel and they build their six units. And the neighbor's parcel is three point one acres and now he's limited to two units.
It's just.
Per acre. Per.
Per acre.
Yeah, 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 it was actually go down, they just switched, naturally switched to a per un- per acres, but it's only two per acre.
But you're promoting them to make a split then of a half acre off of this three point one acre.
Yeah, too bad, but.
You can.
I mean, is that.
But that's what we're getting, but it's probably. Is that what you want to?
That, that's a good point though, if you think that's the acres. Split half, the half gets two, and the two and a half still gets three, so how you follow?
Can I throw a suggestion? I don't think we're gonna get to this answer in this.
No, I think we're so close, don't give up. Don't give up.
Don't give up.
We're so weird.
Okay, alright.
He's not talking as much, we're so.
Well.
Literally.
Not wrong.
Blackberry in the fire station.
I think we're nobody, and he's, and he's so fine, we like.
What?
We give way now. Laid. It was two for a chair.
Yeah. But I don't think it's true.
Oh, good, alright, I'll be fine.
We're getting. As long as Chris is over. Just not in the state of mind, he's done also. He has that.
So he had four.
Three.
Considering all the happens for the person that splits the property.
Okay, so what are our options when it comes to limiting the split, is it then?
So as of right now, in the current draft, the smallest you can split a lot in the Form Based Code, sorry, I have to get to it. Is four thousand square feet, that's the smallest lot you can create. Now that could be increased. To, uh, you know, to, to, uh, discourage, you know, splitting all the time. And you can also say, by the way, that you can't split any lot smaller than this, but lots down to this are still built. If they already exist.
Yeah, the problem with this is, when we looked at, and I'm gonna throw out, you know, our new base, what we looked at. When we looked at developing that property, if you're bank and you wanna make two units. We wanted to encourage them to be able to split that in two, so there could be two buildings there because it looks more like a village where you have. Two separate buildings with, you know, cutness, walkable, all of those things. And so that's where it's hard.
I guess I would also.
It's a big difference between four lots where it'd be in a half acre.
Yeah.
I had a second of all, four times, going at this, is it, the seven, uh, uh, back this up, Chris? Second, seven, four. Residential, that's the policy.
That does not apply to Form Based Code. It, it only applies in the overlay district, so.
But just, we'll, we'll give.
Good, I just wanna.
And I think we just moved residential, well, over.
You, you, I, we only moved from Twenty-Eighth, but we're, I, I thought we should.
One thing. We don't know where.
I feel good with this.
But so we have, you guys are on this, we got that.
Yeah, I just, the only thing is with the lots splits, but I just think that, I don't, we can only do so much, we do the best we can.
When we originally had this conversation, we actually put a maximum. Lot size on it with the intent that we did want people to divide the lots so that you wouldn't have big box stores and strip malls and. The warehouse, the intent was to create a grid and then to create a village.
The current, the current township ordinance was driven to attract big box stores.
Right.
That, in the day, we didn't have it, and so the goal was to, to make a home for them.
That's why we, I thought.
Now, we have a Walmart and Meyer, so pretty comfortable, we're where we're at.
And they took out shopping center. Made that, car market, that was. Cars are circling, we have to get this done, we don't want to hunt it because we're under such high pressure for development at all times. We're getting, this is, we're the.
Jay, are you good on this?
I'm seeing it come down, yeah, we've had a lot of resonants to review, you know, that's, that'd be good on one.
I, I, I'd be fine, it's a relation to this one specific.
For the four days phone.
Four is granted down to four units per acre.
Two.
But the title were commercials.
The big ones.
They're right, we're saying that, that's keeping it on, that's keeping it in check. And I don't know why we need it, and luckily they do its climbing.
If we don't do it, we're gonna get garbage. We gotta do something.
They don't, they don't.
And that's not the question, the question would be that, so you're good?
He's good.
And what if we take the minimum lot size in, in the village and made that happy, or multiple bucks would be? You can still split your United Bank property.
Well, let's just say the minimum lot split is a half acre. That would be, you said the minimum lot size, but we have.
Okay, the minimum lot split is.
So the minimum lot split would be a half acre.
Could that be, is what you have on the smaller?
This is cut down, just to do a bunch of quarter acre lots, just to draw on a bunch of houses.
So the, the smaller ones would still be in form.
Uh, right.
It's not a great deal.
Correct, because that's what I don't want, you don't think.
So people will pay a lot for how, for all the condos.
Yes, they will, that's what we're banking. You pass it, but they do, they have, there's always, they will.
But like, you're buying also, it's all being so. We're even giving out a lord, we're doing the special support.
Well, and.
We, we're all putting these traffic on here.
Well, and, and another thing that I have to talk about there is, part of this, there's no include, there's not a lot of private roads. Oh, you do a private road back through Thornapple Center, to your, you know, your.
Yeah, they have to have loads and the road can come through, those real roads down there.
And that, you should do some of the planning.
Have many stairs.
Yeah, I, I would make, we'll have road standards, they don't have any.
I just, pretty annoying, but.
So like, we're not a lot, but you needed, if you wanna put in some of that, you would do a little. With the machine.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm starting to go a lot of those.
No. I know.
You're gonna play a guess, remember.
Okay. Okay, so that, are we good for right now with this session? Okay, where do we want to go next? Do we wanna do the?
We'll read it together.
That, well, Star is part of seventy point four, right?
Yes, so.
Great.
Well, can I, can I start, can we talk about? I think that as a committee, we looked at what the planning commission had decided or discussed last year. That any sort of, we didn't see residential or apartment style units when that development from Chicago came in. Um, the planning commission had decided, when you're discussing that point, there's no, it's open, but, um. Any of the higher density units like that would be west of ninety-six. So when we look at Star, we look at, let's see there, are some hotels that we need for costing itself. Makes when it comes to cost of these response, equity response and all of that. So we tried to make was. An office building that are empty, yes. So we, we looked at this area as, we choose more identity, because it's like a square word, but when we looked at. Increase in density in a certain location within its township, this was the area that we identified would be an opportunity. To hopefully get developers to come in and purchase these empty office buildings and to purchase some hotels. Um, and possibly turn them into more of a community place. Um, with, but with an emphasis instead of being on concrete ugly, with some green space and these. Um, requirements where if you do a top deck, or you do decks, or you do green space within your apartment complex, so what are you gonna put there? Then maybe we allow you to do a little, in that area, try to green it up. Um, and to try to promote development within that area, which we decided is in west of ninety-six. to allow this for some sort of redevelopment of that area that is hopefully feasible, right?
Okay, you're.
But that was the thought.
Oh.
We don't know whether, again, this is what we're all, start talking about, whether the density that is in there is correct or not, um, and that's something we can talk about, but I think that the, the, the give and take piece we need to maybe keep in there would be, in my opinion, because it does promote a lot more green space within that area which we don't have right now.
I'm very supportive of high density, yeah. I only, was, was that?
Sort of on the highway.
Yeah, no, it's actually.
But we don't wanna get enough.
The D M C.
Yeah, my only question was, who's driving the L E B D certification? Why are we giving that parade, uh, a bonus? The reason would make sense, the lies, what, what you just said, like, are, who, what? Who's agenda is L E B D?
Through.
Why?
Do we care?
I mean, it's a quality thing, but I have no objection, you guys.
I'm, it seems like somebody had the environmental agenda, put that there, the green space makes good sense, but we forgot it.
Yeah, sure, we have.
I have no objection to that.
Fine, okay, um, if it's trendy and.
What about traffic though?
I mean, it seems like somebody had an agenda to stay, like.
No, I think it was an agenda, I think it's just like said, logging through, like.
Yeah, but I don't say, I'm, again, gone, right, the environmental beauty, but I, I, I think that looking at it from a resident's standpoint, I think the greenery is northward and westward.
Okay, completely great, completely great, I support all, everything else.
And then my question was traffic, so power, congestion there with Costco and Dick's and Target and.
Everything would have to be run through the road.
And then you got, Kenwood doing a huge development behind Home Depot and all the people.
This is road commission, and I think we need to throw a lot of this on step one, we're not allowing private roads, so you can't just put a road back there to make your, whatever you can do, this is something you have to go to the road commission. And they look at these things, that's their gap.
So we're, no commissions are in charge of it.
No, they're not, but.
We gotta work.
They, they might deny it in protocol twenty eighth square. And then.
Yeah, just no.
Yeah, correct.
That's why.
Because what, what, you know, there are, just to be sure, this is clearly what it says in here. In, for developments in the overlaying Form-based code, you can have a road that is going to be privately maintained, however, you must build it to a standard that is actually higher than the road commission standard. You require sidewalks and street trees and adequate width, so you cannot, what is, what is absolutely banned by this ordinance is the thing, the driveway to the back of a Walmart, or a lot, the back of cult, that is not allowed.
Where they plan to put another assisted living center, very.
Yes, and, and, and also outside the overlaying Form-based code, you cannot privately maintain roads at all. So that people don't split up your woodlands and your farmlands with little, two tracts and put houses on that, so that's.
So what, you say you want the high density in the star area, western ninety six, define your high density because we've already got a huge traffic issue down there now. How many more units, are we gonna, are we talking six, eight hundred units in there?
I don't think there's nothing that exists.
Yeah.
Well, you know, ninety six down to Patterson, there's a lot of acres.
Well, specifically that Star triangle, because I think that's the one.
Yeah, we have a.
But it's not, it's a lot, so what, what, you know what that is?
What's the total, what's the total acreage in the Star triangle? Which we all know.
But we also require, uh, we require traffic study, it's required of the development, so when that traffic study is done, that goes.
And again, it's that Kenwood's putting an N P D development, not.
We don't care.
Yeah, it's exactly what our residents don't want, and every single week, we hear from residents, maybe not at board meetings, but they don't want us to become a Kenwood, a Wyoming.
Exactly.
You know, and if we're not careful, we've got three, three year old there, and we are gonna be part of them.
Yeah.
But when they put their development in, all those cars are gonna use our Castade Road to get down to ninety six.
Well, apparently the road commissions are stopping.
Yeah, oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. This would be immediately adjacent to the twenty eighth street high density, that, we're not on any of your Castade.
Well, okay, twenty eighth, twenty eighth.
All getting.
Yeah, it's the town.
Sorry.
Yeah, Gabe.
I'm thinking that whole car.
But I totally agree, that's a very contested.
You know, Kenwood Jones and others, or.
I mean, it's, it's.
You have to get it, but, I did not, even talking to the next.
Have to be careful when you do this.
Because the ones on a twenty, don't get me wrong, the ones on twenty eighth street frontage within that still have to have a commercial on the bottom.
Yes, and we have, we have, that's drafted right now, on the east end frontage, you could do upper floor commercially, you cannot do. So, upper floor is actually casually vertical residential, and we didn't talk about cutting that.
Wasn't residential prohibited on twenty eighth street, so we got to a certain distance from the road. We did talk about that.
And we said, look, let's take that out, so Scott, if you say, if you look at Star, then subtract all of the lots that are on twenty eighth street, then what's that?
Give me a minute, I'm gonna.
Let me ask, uh, 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 into the. I'm guessing it's probably sixty acres. Yeah, you're probably real false, probably.
I'll be a lover in a minute.
I'm imagining right now. So we say it's sixty. I'm, I'm just doing a rough adjustment, not, or measurement, not like, specifically what the park will dark, it's all different heights, but I'm, I'm still, I'm still, I'm at like eighty, eighty acres, if I am, uh, down a car off the load I am. Hardly as tiny as a gas, seven hundred units.
Seven hundred units.
If the whole thing was taken out, yeah. And I'm blocking it, eighty percent coverage, maybe it'd be less than that.
And each dude has six trips a day coming in.
Well, you got, it'd be a hundred acres.
If, 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 if you're.
On the line, oh, if people, if people max out all of those, yeah, get fifteen.
Yeah, what I, what I did there is like, uh, eighty percent, I thought it was, I thought it would be about sixty acres, forty eight acres are buildable. That's in a worst case scenario, it's seven hundred and twenty.
Worst case, because then you still have to add some green space back in.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it may not be fifty, but you might fifty percent, like the real estate.
Right.
Buildable space.
Yeah, well, once you subtract twenty percent for infrastructure and then require ten percent green space.
Yeah, so let's, let's just say, yeah, let's just say it's thirty acres. Fifteen, four hundred and fifty units.
That's some protested from the, um, and if, I know it may not apply to this, but you get the hotels, and then the hotels aren't doing well because there's landlord growth, and then they say we wanna make it, how, a minimum dwelling unit standard, if we heat, hotel room, and turn it into residential.
To be honest, this is intentionally designed. Tell us if you don't like this, but this is intentionally designed, you can demolish those hotels and build mixed-use commercial residential, so.
If you draw the line.
We were, we're actively.
You draw the line, six or a hundred feet north, you know, twenty eighth street, yup, okay.
Which is not much.
Which, which is not much, I think that's the back of, uh.
With the old transition place?
Total line. Like, where, calculating. It's like the back of McDonald's.
Right.
Yeah, so that's. Approximately, uh, you're, you're, you're right in the neighborhood of Rome, it isn't approximate numbers, it's not, I don't know. Yeah. You're right around fifty seven, sixty acres right in there. So that's, that's what I used, yeah, that's what I said, thirty, so I can see about four hundred. That would be behind total line, that would be a bit of green space on any.
And that also includes all the residences, when you live there, that are probably not gonna sell their own.
Yeah, and that doesn't scare me, but that's just me.
But it does get scary if you have. Lots there, and.
Oh, you have the other.
That's, we're on foot.
Forgot about.
Lots more.
We, 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 we have, that, very good.
No, that would actually be, right?
There's a lot further. Get your.
E P is, I think, the, the, people don't know, well, they're.
I mean.
Nobody on South Side, County East Street, so they're gonna turn it off.
So we also, if, if you're getting a residential density, you don't allow, like, the, one of the density points is that you are meeting stormwater. So if you're building, if you're building eagle left, we're not gonna give you that bonus.
Right.
That's another one where you gotta be getting seven figures for those units if you're gonna pay them and get all.
Yeah, it's not cheap or easy.
You know, I, I, I think about what was there before we had the jury hotel. And for years, that property sat with a half burned down hotel and an abandoned gas station, and it was, it was pretty bad over there, and eventually, we allowed for higher height and, you know, and gave, and gave a little, and somebody came in and built a, a large, nice hotel there. At some point, we made the side, we need to throw a bigger carrot, get something over there that's.
But not there now.
But we're not there now.
We don't even need.
And so, we can put this together now, the way we think that, yeah, this is a good shoe, we'll see if it fits, if the shoe doesn't fit, we can reuse, revisit that area later and, and put some more carrots out there and see what happens.
I agree.
And that particular area, we, we have hotels that are consistently calling to see what they can do, that's the hotel ordinance, that's. And we actually have some, uh, some tax regal cases, and it's on the vacant, uh, office buildings out there, that I've been vacant for years, so this, there could, this could be simply. But we don't need to go to the extreme, we can go and throw something up there and see what, what heads, and if it gets as bad as, you know, not saying it's gonna get as bad as, as the bust for the juries, but assuming that is an example, right?
Yeah.
I think you don't wanna try and say.
Alright, so how do we feel, so, yeah, how do we feel?
I'm fine with it, as, as we said, it's removing the L E B D stuff.
Go to the.
Wait, yeah, yeah, finish.
What number is that then that we're at? It can get up to fifteen, it's eight, and then it can get up to fifteen.
South of twenty eight.
Hang on, we have.
Why the twenty, I would feel it.
Because that promotes the green space, that promotes farm preservation stuff, right?
Yeah, it's, it's actually gorgeous stuff, well, we're concerned that you're not allowed to.
Things that you, you're talking about. So this is how we get people to.
Yeah.
Volunteering.
Because it's not legal for you to say, in order to develop in our township, you have to pay us for our green space fund, but what it is legal is for you to say, is if you want that extra dwelling unit, that extra dwelling unit per acre, you gotta pay the green space fund.
And not only the.
And that's, so, that, the other one is, you can't tell them it's gotta be owner occupied, but you can say, you want that extra dwelling unit per acre, yeah, it's gotta be owner occupied. That's what almost all, that, that's the point of all.
Yes, it's try to get it owner occupied and promote all that, so the voluntary incentive.
Well, yeah, otherwise you could get eight acres per acre without getting any, now, you're, you're interested in reducing that number, we can talk about that, maybe do more incentives. We can talk about that.
Okay, so that same, the same expression that we had, does it apply to, it would be Glenwood, it's like south of twenty eighth street.
Hang on, I think we need to get that separately, because this is the one that is west of twenty eighth street, and I think we need to look.
But I think what brings this property is originally they were wanting, that they could do a lot, you didn't.
We need, yes, we did, and they assigned different uses that were more appropriate that you can see in the use table and justify.
Okay, because being, they have an inquiry on that, but still, what we're talking about here, but, um. I think it's one.
Is, where at, Chris?
It would be, um.
The golden address off Crabb.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
South of ninety six, across the water, Target.
It was a good, yeah, so you would look over that water area, but.
Yeah.
And that would be a higher density building that basically is connected directly, right?
So that area was crap, thirty third.
We were allowed to have everything there, so.
Those issues.
Section four, seven B is the applicable overlay districts for the density bonuses. So I just took out twenty eighth street overlay because we're not allowing residential there, striking that.
Okay.
And then this is, that means you don't want residential at all, I mean, off the point.
I mean, right, I was twenty eighth street overlay, right now.
We turned out, no, so when you, when you talk about the, um, Glenwood, the residential bonuses are allowed in Glenwood, as this is written, right?
And that's the one that's drafted, and I need to say.
That's correct, that's correct, I will pay that, I mean, too, because it's kind of the same.
It goes back to the whole.
But then would be a different density if you're only proposing stock. Or is it the same?
There's, that was like, they're the same.
Yeah, I don't, so it's, it's a small area. It's actually eight per acre with the opportunity, which I think we keep drawing on the fifteen, you have to, you have to work to get to fifteen, yeah.
Just see, so, the corner has a huge, I don't know, what?
Yeah.
So that area.
So you only really.
You're only talking very third and correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and that, that you won't, that leaves us.
Right, so.
And that is busy and congested, so if it was done, I, if you have a lot of, but you.
Overlooked.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a really nice.
And that was a legitimate builder that, I mean, yeah, just kind of looked at that, that would be a problem, I think.
I agree. Any questions?
But Centennial Park included in this?
It is.
That, I.
Wait, wait, since Centennial Park is included, that everything was just, that's the same as by the.
Centennial Park, so right now, this Centennial Park overlay, as it said, allows twelve units per acre. It's a max of twelve units per acre, so what we're doing is decreasing the max, or the, the base units in Centennial Park from twelve down to eight.
If we get any, how do you come there association, like all of us?
Well, you're correct.
Right, what did he say?
I think he wants.
They, they, they're, they were hoping to see more density into.
Oh, then we actually reduced.
They weren't that. Had the seventy acres and spin them away and put.
So we're reducing that, from twelve to.
Eight, what's wrong with going twelve to six?
Yeah, twelve to six.
Where you maintain some of your green space, so, yeah, you have more green space. And that would be an ideal place to attract higher, um, residents.
Well, you're not getting it with twelve, so that means that you're not gonna get it as it.
If we, if we step back, are we suggesting just, we're gonna separate Centennial from Star, I think, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's definitely.
Yes, and glad they are, yeah, there's no way we have any residential.
Well, think of the castle, it's already, it's already big, there's hundreds of pandas that are, and it's really big.
I go, we're good with Star and Glen.
Yes.
I just wanna like, put this thing to bed.
I think we are.
If you're willing to, to go that way on Star.
I'd give it Glenwood too, it's a small spot.
Yeah, it is a small spot, okay, yeah, alright, and then our rhythm is listed here too.
Our rhythm should be removed, that's.
The. Yeah, that, okay. No, remove. Interchange is here.
Our rhythm is Watermark.
Yeah.
The cat's teeth for the door, so he said.
I know, I know.
Right, he just got to that. The other that's listed here is interchange, which is the Meyer. I don't think we want that here.
Hang on, say it again, we don't.
We don't want it.
Which is how.
Here.
It has that was changed.
Definitely had compression.
Which one?
Interchange, where all the hotels and.
By, by.
Did we talk about it?
We didn't.
That one. I just said that maybe, because I don't, what are you gonna do on there?
On page seven nine seven.
Um, so those are some of the hotels that are kind of floundering, that.
Are you, what makes you say they're floundering?
Because they're, because they call out and asking if they, they develop them, but they would not, those particular owners would not develop, you want them here.
That traffic, that's, that's it, I think, the potential of the.
So, actually, yeah, I think you're saying.
Maybe that's the traffic, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Does it, is reading.
The, the traffic count may be less if you have hotels that convert to larger units.
So if you have.
The current residents that live there.
Yeah, because, I think there's much, I don't think there's.
I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of vacancy.
You would go past the parking lot, faith out of the day, or the, and they don't have any cars.
So they have the cars, they wouldn't be looking through, so then, okay, we're gonna remove our arena, we're gonna remove interchange from that, I don't think that's part of the conversation right now. Um, right now, the village form base is part of us, that.
No.
And, wait, where does it say that?
It said it on the map, something I saw.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, we should, we should review that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Centennial Park, we're going to remove it at a separate conversation, right?
May I make a quick point about the boundaries of Centennial Park? The boundaries of Centennial Park have changed from the boundaries of Centennial Park when you had the conversation about that in, I think, two thousand and ten, and then twenty twenty two. If you look at the boundaries of Centennial Park prior to this map, they go all the way to twenty eighth.
Which changes your map.
So seven dash ninety seven, Centennial Park is the gray hatch房, and then twenty eighth street overlay is the blue.
So I love this Centennial Park, there's no. We're looking for Tahoe and Hollywood Drive, are those are the residential, but you're defining Centennial Park today, it looks almost explicitly commercial.
No, no, this is all residential, one of them's industrial, uh, the township hall is in there, and then there is a large, um.
Is the township?
Yeah, yeah, we're on kind of the.
I didn't know what.
We have to go around the other side.
Okay, that's all.
For the other side of the street, isn't.
I don't think the township hall is part of it.
They're not.
This is.
That is the outside of the street right here.
Excluded.
So what are, what are we then, retirement?
This right here.
Oh, that's a. Can't leave the dollar on the.
I think. But the rest of this is, it's, I know. No, because they do have.
Something, oh, sorry, my hand, okay.
But then the property that you have, and you know, how, and how.
They split all, yeah, that makes sense, thank you. So, I, I think we agree, it's, it's a separate conversation. So, I I think we agree, it's it's a separate conversation from Star and Glen.
But what ways does it only satisfy?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But if. It applies all.
So we need to fix that, and then we want to come up with each other if we want.
I don't think we want to do anything to interchange.
No.
Let's make that real clear when we just said.
Uh, but where we have, I don't believe it's.
So.
It's all P U Ds right now.
I know it's okay, but she, anyway, opens the house with Danderly, now this. Which will allow for sports and a club, which is currently there, which I don't, I don't think that's too bad.
And that one of a.
No, it is, right. Yeah, one of that that big office building is also.
Which is fine, so I just wanna make sure that what's.
We could put Starbucks and Special and National, and that's this.
We should do special or anything coming too.
Oh, we're recreational facilities, private. Yes, it's a specialty use.
So we're agreeing to Star and Glenwood, so.
Correct.
Starting Glenwood.
And didn't we also knock out the corner?
Make that, no, let's start.
Not other than that.
It's not.
It's if it's not.
It comes back.
We wanna leave south, we wanna leave southwest, like that is, it's already.
I think so, because I think this is kind of less than what.
I concur, I concur, that's why, if you talk triple, John was putting Southwest in the same bucket as Star.
What it is now.
It's.
Southwest is those new.
Yes, now, still west of the.
It's a damn.
I think that is so sensitive, I know people disagree, I don't want to encourage, like, I wanna.
I'm gonna delay industrial, I don't want the residential, that's the underlying.
Oh.
And then we, oh, I'm I'm not trying to.
No, no, I'm just.
Trying to build consensus, I don't care.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to, anything is. I don't want the same level of that, of the residential density that we just talked about for the Star.
That's a conversation, that's that's fine, I just, that's what we're saying.
For Southwest.
Yes, but we're getting very specific, until I wait to be here. That we agreed for this for Star and Glenwood only, so we need an updated map that is just for those, and then we can have a separate conversation about these other areas.
Let me, can you tell us the map, because the map is not uh regular, it's just a district, where the district's on. I I do agree, we should take more Mexico out because it's not one of those districts, it's a separate district and separate capital, but the rest I would advocate, unless you are eliminating the overlay, it should be on the map. And we'll change the text to say what we want to.
Well, that's fair enough, as long as it's it's very.
Yeah.
It's wasn't what it is, we says, I read it, it doesn't appear to be, it says all the districts.
I just verified, you're taking Southwest.
Yeah, it's part of all, we're taking, it's a separate conversation, that's all we're saying, right now, this is read, I'm Star and Glenwood.
May I get some clarification, did you, did you clarify waterfall shops, which is where the Costco is, it's just sort of west?
I don't think you're.
I mean, really, I don't know that we need to use that.
We don't need.
Yeah, I I mean, it's a work, so in that section.
But to just. The only thing, I I just, I feel like we're we're going a little fast here, I just wanna make sure that we all understand, we're zoning for tomorrow, not for what's there today. So if someone came through and closed their stores, you have an empty day box there, are you happy with what the current zoning is for that location?
The P U Ds.
There's no.
We don't, half the other dress is what happens, I don't.
You're.
Well, no, what's the deal?
So just process wise, I'm just, sometimes it's too late, you get the, had the real estate transaction on the back end, they buy the property, they have plans for it, or your current zoning, they apply for something or come in and start acquiring. We scurry, try to go back and add the ordinance, that'll get sued.
I don't.
My personally don't have any.
I'm stating, we're even in there.
I don't understand, just make sure whatever we're.
So the underlying zoning in that Costco area, so say they buy, right now they're in a P U D, right, the underlying of general business.
But overlay would be this, which would supersede, does not supersede the P U D, but the developer would have the unilateral option to chop the P U D and trash use the overlay instead. That's the idea.
Oh, what is that overlay called?
It is called waterfall shops.
No, I think we turn waterfall shops, we can, I I'd rather just state the underlying zoning, which is general business.
I I concur, I I don't have an issue with that.
I can I make, can I advocate for a second, keep it in, for the architectural requirements of the.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I I we're just, I'm just, we're not discussing, it relates to the density.
Chris, okay, yes. Yeah, so we'll keep it in as an overlay, as it relates to the architectural require.
Yes.
But residential.
No residential, it will fall back to the the underlying zoning, which is general.
That's fantastic. Yeah, let me make one more point too, what I think, what you're talking about doing is getting rid of residential density bonuses, applying them, but some of these still allow for residential in the charts. Would you like us to change the charts as well?
I don't.
Move our.
Water. While we're talking.
Yes.
Being that. Yes, waterfall shops does not need to be residential.
Just to recap then, twenty eighth street, anything that's just twenty eighth street and isn't in some other overlay. The interchange area, Myers, waterfall shops, Arboretum, no residential.
Correct.
Okay.
We talked about Star, we talked about Glenwood, we're on board with residential and the bu- the bonus E J S A Southwest.
I did not say Southwest, because for uh Mr. Norda, we would be, we're still seeing that today.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Southwest and Centennial are separate conversations, I think that's what we're saying.
I also have Star and Glenwood at eight units per acre plus the bonuses that can get you to fifty.
You're gonna have to get, I mean, formula, we just yank L E D out, so is there something that, like, are you gonna opt for the green, I I don't care how you get there, I think we're.
No, you can take, you can take anything, so I think they think you take.
Okay.
So then. Yeah, there's a couple of these don't actually have, yeah, so like, green space is a good example, actually, you get a good break of over ten percent, so if you're sixty percent. I will, yeah, if you wanted to do seventy percent green space, you could do fifteen units per acre, or anything, I'm not gonna pay, but just for just to make it fair.
That's in there. And farmlands, yeah, yeah, free of the name.
Oh, yeah, plus you could pay for some farmlands.
Fire.
Nope, no.
Glen, we tried.
We go next down, I'm sorry, we don't access.
Even for you.
Centers. Yeah, fifty years.
Okay. So which one do we wanna take next, Centennial or Southwest?
Let's do Southwest and.
We saw.
Okay, do we know what Southwest is today, can we look up what?
It's actually the E M E and then.
It's a P U D though, right?
Everything is the E, it's the the metal brick P U D.
I don't want residential.
It's stock commercial, then it's the um small presently residential, and then essentially industrial that allows.
I do not have residential.
Reese spoke probably about no residential, because who else confirms with that, I'm not trying to, she does, Kenny does, like.
We're the same.
Don't.
People don't interest industrial.
They're already approved there, is that.
Yeah, then, just being on the underlying, underlying zoning, portion of it is general business, and then transitional industrial inside certain sections, and then industrial around the outside.
So.
Yeah.
So we need. Saying no residential, Kenny is saying the same thing, or Sue's saying the same.
I would support that, we have people coming saying that we need industrial, industrial property.
Yeah, it's already trade.
That's.
Right, we're just.
Power there, so obviously, we.
Oh, we don't have a.
How are they always showing the lines on these, they can't do this, and they're.
But future ones will stop. Future ones will stop.
There is a.
But that, alright, Chris, there's you guys.
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, uh. You guys might wanna consider just eliminating that overlay, that that's simply zoning with the P U D.
Yes.
As any previously developed or something.
Yes.
Yeah.
But hang on, it's general business in that stuff, in the bottom.
Then we would then change that to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You better have any. That's not much. So are we gonna change the general business then to transitional industrial or industrial?
Transitional, well, change in investment.
What's more? And there's residential already within that, so I think transitional industrial.
Somebody wants to.
Complex.
Somebody wants to get an apartment in the industrial. And maybe there, that's fine.
But those, we didn't want anymore, we won't, but they're already building, we stopped it, but they have.
A lot of them, they.
It's all just gonna be D I.
Yeah, there won't be.
How many more can they put up? How many more, they have thirty twenty dollars, if somebody has.
I don't know, we.
In the D I.
Yeah, they, they are, I don't know exactly, they're in the process, I think there's maybe ten, ten-ish buildings, maybe fourteen, and they're probably six, eight, seven.
Thirty.
How about?
Fourteen, I'm losing.
Clear, it's exactly fifteen, ten, fourteen.
Hmm, how old is that P U D?
Approved that.
Not old, it was twenty twenty-two, I believe, not long.
I was like, you approved this, of course.
Oh.
Is that, it's sad, sorry, we're talking Stephen York, I'm gonna say that at the league, yeah.
I think it was you.
That always confused me, I hear.
There's one meeting in my tenure of this, that was the one. Probably first.
So, well, that's a perfect example of put in the door, and it takes a while, and you realize the big picture, we need that beauty, a little pro shocker.
It's all, so we can, we move on, so.
So.
Yeah, there we go.
It's, yeah, it's just a change in the underlying zoning, we wanna ask one more from a second question, right now, there's some uh rural conservation for our build off of Sixth Street, that's.
Their current zoning, can you ever read on this that property, if we want to.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep the rural.
And then that in thirty T I.
Alright, Centennial Park, let's go there.
Okay, let's go.
I don't know what that is, but. What 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 are we gonna do there?
Did we change?
We're currently at twelve.
Hang on, so we changed the. The map of Centennial Park.
We changed the boundary of the overlay.
Okay.
It does air all of the path.
No.
So what is the underlying zoning of, we keep on seven acres as for sale back up there, what is the underlying zoning of that?
The underlying zoning is primarily general business within the um district of the overlay.
I don't think it put.
Wait, hang on, hang on, hang on.
No, I. I think you should share everyone if you're willing.
What?
Yeah. Drive around, it's the amount of agency, it's all interesting things you've done in the past, like, I think there's opportunities there.
I I think there is a, I think there, because when you drive around, and actually just say, I'm building across the street. The vacancy rate, I don't have the exact rate, but vacancy, all those commercial buildings inside, inside of work, is increasing, but it's, and it's not coming back. So you're not gonna see commercial offices to be what they are, or they can be occupied. So, I think we have to consider something different, and some sort of alternative there, and I, I think residential is is appropriate. And I say that because you have the ridges, which are apartments in the back, you have, here, I don't see you guys talking, then I see that you've got the the senior housing, you've got some condos, and then you have the condos along Tahoe. Why, where's, if you did something that was very similar, and based that, and you have the West Coast there, clearly, there's an appetite for that, so why would we not continue that type of, going to that type of development?
Not started.
Especially because you have people that are wanting to get rid of their large parcel houses that they've lived in, raised their families in, they wanna stay in Cascade, there's a lot of seniors that live in the back of Centennial Park.
And the idea, you can say a lot of that, yeah, the idea that one part is very walkable area, there's people walking all the time.
We need to.
Do, yes, yes, when we, yes. From there to the village core area is a very short.
It's.
Yeah.
We all agree, we have to do something.
Yeah.
But that would be, we have to, maybe, maybe you're.
Well, yeah, I think we, we have to do something, I think commercial's gonna work.
No, or or business.
Chris, so. Well, I don't have.
Yeah.
Clearly, that, that area has been oversaturated with office space since it was built.
It's beautiful.
And and so it it is, but the fact of the matter is, they built a little too much office space.
Well, they don't take a formal, and it made sense when that was.
Yeah.
So, I mean, having it, having uh an extension of what's already there with those condos and stuff to take over something.
I think, I think, like, if we didn't do residential, what else could we do, I don't think the one downstairs there.
No, we don't.
Not.
No, 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 it's, I think they would do, the park down Tahoe, it's.
And I think, you know, when we, I think in the summer, maybe we talked about the um the twenty eighth street overlay, and we we took that boundary and pushed it two hundred fifty feet back off of twenty eighth street. But so still promote commercial along the quarter street, but then those commercial um developments can be supported by the residential that would be living right there in part area. So I, I just, I think it makes sense, um, easy highway access, I mean, you can control the density, um, what did you say, the map twelve per acre?
Correct.
And that's what, what's the name of the?
It was the port, it was the port businesses in the village areas, it's actually quite close.
What is the the name of the, they're older, I thought all.
It's not gatehouse, is it?
It it, no, the port holes condominiums, no, no, across the street, the brown.
The brown ones.
Gatehouse.
Oh. So.
It's.
So, I'm sorry, it's. Has done, really, I think it's.
It's.
But it's.
But it has like great corn.
And it's it's not too dense, it's really, those are nice.
I don't.
Yeah.
The nine of all.
Of course. Other than laughing, other than laughing, some sidewalks, that whole area too, it's the the street's been redone, the curb, that it's.
That's been walked on, and all the old curbs.
Very limited.
And the old carpet.
Yep.
So how do we turn that into? So some of that is why we put that base density there, but then required, they get extra density in their residential units through adding sidewalks.
I don't know, that was.
I just don't need to to.
Was this outside?
Well, it's.
You made.
Like, well, it's.
All the.
Three.
They got.
Two, well, several, you.
Yeah.
The fact that. That they got bonuses for connecting, like.
They do, yeah, yes, that's exactly.
That's pretty much her, I just. I feel like we did what we're talking about with Star.
Well, thirty three. Yeah, yeah, that's, so, I I wasn't here for this, I didn't, but you guys were all presented with what I call a lifestyle center, somebody out of town years ago. That is kind of a, it's a community within itself, they are more dense, they are higher, but you can control that, um.
They're there.
Those are, he was twenty though, I think, or twenty-five.
It was.
I believe.
He was very.
It was.
So then, it's, it's in the biggest. There's fifteen out of control with all all green space entries.
No.
Yeah. I'm asking Timmy, because.
Well, there was, there was condos along the both.
Right? So.
Barely not, there are not fifteen units per acre.
And I have, they're twelve, I'm saying, like. Right now, they're twelve too many on there.
But that's the way I'm doing it, right?
That's what. Cause we changed it from twenty to twelve.
I think it was, anything over twelve was a specialty use, and you limited it to, and up to twelve.
Up to twelve. Jay falls out of P U D, so. Put it at twelve, up to twenty, equalize, especially, that happens.
Um, they wouldn't do it, I don't know that they would present, and I'm not sure that the zoning score would.
And so that, like, if they wanted to, let's say that, you know, we'd be telling Andrea, listen for that type of thing.
Yep, yep.
How how would that get to us when we could change it?
Oh, by us just communicating, letting you know, like, we need to start, the the trends that are gonna happen, there are people out there, and we will absolutely hear them back.
Okay, and then send more conservative Timmy type messages.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, but say, hey, we're open to ideas.
Yep.
I don't want it like those living centers. I don't want it like those living centers.
Fair enough, but we'll have a lower standard. Depends more often if you're hearing ideas, then you can say I don't want. Because it doesn't allow it. But maybe you do if they're spending, you know.
And I think what it takes to, and and I I can only speak to this because I sit here now, back when I was presenting to you, I can never look for a mention of Florida. I would have had way more conversations with the developer to talk about community benefit. What could they do to cover compliance zoning?
Alright.
It would have been a much, much more.
Hundred percent.
Like. Friendly handoff as opposed to under fire them presenting at the board with something.
They seem to.
Before now, like.
But we would have had these conversations at the. At the office saying, this isn't gonna fly.
And actually, and.
We do.
Many of those conversations already were like, this isn't gonna fly. You're gonna fly, but we know you're not gonna get anywhere.
Exactly.
And so from there, we just continue to have those conversations that we.
We have a, we have a quarterly joint work session with the planning commission where those types of crazy ideas get presented to us. If we have.
Can we talk about taking their zoning projects on title?
What?
I know you're talking about this one, but there you go. Maybe this is not the right avenue. You could have talked about a smaller group like the fire chief and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's in here.
So when something like this comes, it comes before a small group.
Development review committee, I'm not sure if that's. So when someone wants to do something in a township, they can come into the office and say. We wanna do this, we wanna run it through your zoning. There's no cost for that. They come in, they need them. Myself, they mean Andrea, I think it's fired, I mean the sheriff, I mean road commissioner, it's applicable for twenty eighth or Cascade Road. Probably Greg would be on there and Alan from the uh planning commission would be on there. It's in the um uh the GTA, we get GTA Andrew. You send this out to all of the stakeholders, if you will, internal, to take a look at it and say. We're gonna poke holes at it and say, this isn't gonna apply. You're gonna have to get a permit from Eagle for this or a permit from the road commissioner for this. So that is something that we wrote in here. I don't know where that's at. So it's on uh fourteen dash two one five.
Okay, good.
Reapplication conference. That is available to anyone that wants to comment about anything that they would. In the township.
And and I think we would step to them and. The stakeholders in that to know, okay, this is something viable. We as a board would want to get.
And there's a formal response that's given to the applicant or the acquirer. So we would break that up just like you would respond to any application that comes in. So Danny will take the lead to test a run through planning that all of the comments, a building would be in it as well. We would take all those comments and send back review, oh, an official review, internal review saying. First glance, here's what you need to go address. Number one, decrease your density. Number two, you've gotta mitigate some of that lands or, you know, the site. You gotta talk about ingressing your grass. Like, there's so many things you can go through.
People that we have, yes.
They were pushing that.
They they were.
So they come in with something. So. They um. Up the wall development, and we know that that's an area where we could take a chance. They'll be like, okay, we can talk. They come into Centennial, they wanna put up twelve story, like a park company, so they go, nope, that's not gonna go.
Exactly.
And I'm talking the extreme, but at least it gives us the opportunity to kind of steer them down where we know the planning commission is important.
Yep. So so with Centennial, it um. What's the base and what do you think?
I'd say we can get tighter because we're pretty open to ideas and. Right now, it's.
Certainly, we know.
With lanterns again, you said in your.
Yeah, and I like to view it's it's a half acre per unit if you include there. Um so what does that bring you to?
To two acres, yeah, for two, even. I don't think we wanna go that far if they're at twelve, but how about six?
Well, right now, it's a top.
So would buy that.
And those condos along those fairways, there's.
So I think there's a intriguing idea here of cutting the base, but keeping the capital, you do all the bonuses the same. Because that goes to a crisp point that someone will come in and they'll have to really juice it to get the density they want, but really do it.
But.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm I'm just, I'm just telling you right now, there's existing condos there. We're not gonna come in and do three times the density of the existing. That's gonna cause nothing.
Well, that's what you're saying. I think they're saying it's volatile. I mean, I I think they don't wanna.
No, I don't think it's on. Higher. It's three times, I mean, it would be.
I don't think you want, like you're saying, that's what, that's what I'm hearing, that it is volatile.
It is volatile today. I want to get it down.
We have an actual example, you know, space, we can pretty sound the space with the max of.
It's low as.
Well, yeah, it's six ninety eight.
Does it, it doesn't. Is right now in Centennial?
Six with a max of twelve.
Wouldn't know how long if they can.
Adding on the express, right, this this recipe is probably over twelve.
Over around.
Yeah, it's pretty. I can do the calculation there. Yeah, I like the idea of going lower and then maybe not.
Yeah. So section.
It's in twelve, because it's in ten.
Six.
Yes. Or we're gonna change it to the maximum, let's say six. To twelve, whatever that number is, it will, just because we're having a conversation. We'll absolutely have developers in my office, like they'll be at the public hearing.
In a bad way or a curious way?
Yep.
In a loud way?
Yeah.
I think it's less than what it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah, guess what?
Well, if you leave the topic.
They're gonna kill us.
Exactly, can you say that?
They're gonna kill us if you don't like that.
You're invested.
Which is fine.
Don't be stupid. Like she said, like.
That's it, yeah, no.
That's what it is, and that works hard. Or can you?
And what do you think the bonuses, do you want bonuses or?
Bonuses are.
So what would you go the top end with bonuses? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
So would you?
We used to hear about John.
That's.
Twelve, but.
So.
We've already.
Get close to six and ten, now we got a four over you and Scott.
Five, ten, six, seven, I can do six. You live with six and ten? Probably the max. And like I said, these guys are pissed off about that. You go to Kenwood.
The problem is.
They have to run one to do the living.
But what you're not saying to see the.
Actually, you know. God, it was so difficult. But I know I see the work is built along top.
One word.
So did they alone? Not our responsibility, Bill.
I agree, I know.
I go to China this year.
With that building there, Gulfridge condos, right, it was built years and years ago.
That's it.
A shallow way, right? Building called Golf Course condos. They didn't have hair, summaries, let's let's all sign.
And we're 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 out, we're done with Centennial, right? Everybody's good.
Six five. So my my concern is that when they, that all of the people, the residents of that building, Gulfridge condos, their concern was when that was redeveloped from a golf course to apartments. They were suddenly surrounded by higher density with the ridges.
Yep.
And that was, they felt unfair to them. And so what I don't want to do is say that that area can have twice or. Four times the density that it currently has.
We're not just eight, fifteen now. Yeah, we're going way below.
If it is, I need to talk to the numbers. I don't know if it's really what it is. Look at the map.
He he.
It's a very.
Well, I understand.
Well, he's not listening.
No, the current is.
It's fine.
That's what we.
Same.
We get it, but that's. About something different than he.
Oh, something from the map. I don't think the golf course is in what is considered. So are pursuant to their overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
So what you're talking about is absolute balance, but I don't think it's.
Can you, can we talk about that? Because what is that golf course in current zoning, the new zoning, R one or R two? Which is a lot happening.
Which is fine, right?
Yeah.
It's definitely our water. So did the R one or R two, because that's.
Oh, okay. Not specifically to that piece of land. Got those things consistent when you drive up Tahoe.
I like.
I. It allows to be condos and also we've got to. It's a day and then we go back to condos. Why? Because what's.
I mean.
That's all. It should be consistent with what's there.
R two.
And that's why I was using the analogy about the.
And that's.
Well, I just, I just wanna clarify because we're not due this document, so. We're having different density allowances for.
Centennial.
Centennial Park than the other two.
Yes.
Yes, right.
So we're doing. It's a diameter here in six and ten.
Yes.
Which, okay, I mean with the.
Base set bonus up to ten.
Up to ten.
Hmm, and then with the.
One, we're.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do we enough. Well, wait a minute, so. No, they're not gonna do it. It's twelve or fifteen.
So we'll we'll give you back once, once this is ready then. It's always, this is always gonna be.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's official, it's it's a living nightmare.
Absolutely, we're always listening.
We can do them now. They can do more high in condos and it'll. Things happening, so it's not gonna have so reduced density.
I'm gonna run through. Just the, if you look after your legal contents, there is a change table in the zoning ordinance. Every change that I'm gonna, I'm just gonna give you a quick summary and get consensus agreement on each of the changes that we've made since. This was put out on July third. Um, all the changes are already made in the document, it sits in the paper on half. I'm gonna give you over you. Hopefully you'll agree. I think they're all positive things.
Where can I make a statement before we get into them? These are suggestions on the township attorney. They reviewed it to make sure. Most of this, none of it came from E V A, uh trustees, and then uh. Call the things from staff and building department, they're buying the use of words and sort of just saw here. It's not, you're looking at uh B, so it's like. Is that this one?
Yeah. The change table is.
Looks like this table. Like this good page in, the page number.
It would be, it would be ten, B, so in the beginning of yours can be ordered and stop the cloud. Like the ten region.
Seven north.
No, 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 five, don't get it, happy. You do. You have the table contents and after the table contents in the document is the. I also want to mention that some of these come up because we get a call and we're like, oh, yeah, we haven't thought about that. And oh, yeah, we've had that problem over and over. And our goal with this entire ordinance was to clarify definitions, clarify language, and bring. Um easier, you know, administration for our staff and for the resident. So I like what we're doing with this. We just have to remember that. Don't forget me now, that's up to public review. What people are looking at, right?
Correct.
Which is the problem, we're just. So our goal is to leave the document as it is online right now and continue to get feedback since we've noticed it. At the eighteenth public hearing, we will bring the exact same document that we have in front of you. With the red lines saying, again, the same change chart thing. We all understand that you've been looking at this since you've got. There, here's the changes we made. I'll do the same exact thing with the summaries that we keep needing. Um. And then we'll forward the.
We can see back, we may be changing.
Correct, yeah.
There will be some more added after tonight, but like words says, on occasion, by would be. Possibly looks such a, that would be a lot that we talked about tonight.
And that's how in the in the patent, with the eighth public hearing, that's how it will be presented to the public. So first one is for your removal, section eleven nine. The majority of what we've done with this, this is the section.
They're ever gonna start with.
R two, E two. Oh, I'm just writing.
They're all on the table, shouldn't be there, almost.
Okay.
So the first one, I mean, you brought it up to the older ladies of the buildings need to be, need to be counted for setback requirements.
Actually, I didn't want them counting to set that.
We are not.
Currently, they don't.
On, sorry, we don't.
Actually. The. The um staff memo does go in order. That goes in order from when we receive them and in order of the document. Staff memo includes all of them summarized. But some of that, we had to change names.
On this first one, it said that any part of the building would count as a setback, and I did not want the overhangs to count as setback. You gotta go to the wall of the shed or the. So reduce. Okay.
So do you?
Or post, right?
I I misunderstood.
So the conversation.
Several conversations.
And what I understood.
Well, the original one said any part of the building. Yes, that overhang would be part of the building. Why do we change from where? That's what we've always had in Cascade. We have accounted overhangs. Why are we, why are we including those? A misunderstanding.
I don't think that there's any clarity in the zoning ordinance. There is no, let me be clear. There is no clarity in our current own zoning ordinance. So anything you've been doing has been tradition. We're now defining. Where we measure from.
We can correct it by and all. Yeah, can we, we want to.
We all.
We're not counting overhangs, I think.
Validation, foundation.
I have a question, though, and it's not exactly. But we've seen things that have changed from the last time. And I think that that is E two not be good when it comes to the fire hazard keys.
Well, have it run that past the video, because all the tiny buildings.
But do you mind, yeah.
Yeah. You can say the twelve.
That's the only thing.
Whatever.
So that's the only question. Otherwise, I agree with everything that you're saying.
Everybody's doing five, what are you?
Everybody's doing one, what?
So currently, the the ordinance says. No, there's there are exceptions that say five, when you change that table and already got contested. And that was changed before the seventy three draft. It's in.
Okay, cut it from the wall.
Okay.
And then just get the clarification about what you're asking.
That.
Did not. Okay, these seats are warm.
Okay, the sports court change, uh we in our original document did not require a setback for sports courts, but that doesn't make any sense. Because we don't want somebody building a, you know, pickleball court right on a property, they need to property, so.
Yeah. Sorry. The next one, I just wanna make sure that you agree with what this was. I heard this conversation because there was some.
Sports court or no.
The one.
So is this the sports court? We having complaints right now about sports courts? Or is it something we think we have complaints on?
I think it broke it when you were there. Somebody even asked, we looked at it and we're like, ooh, in the new zoning ordinance, they can build it right here, and that would not be nice to the neighbor. So we adjusted accordingly.
So what would a pickleball setback requirement be as an example?
As as the same as an accessory building, so. Five or ten feet, depending on.
I guess what two hundred square foot pickleball court? Compared to. So ten feet.
I generally find five feet on a five foot, that's just me. I I I like I, if it's a tennis court, though, they're considerably larger, I'm still going five feet because it's not true that it's like you, but okay, that's just. A basic smaller lot, I want to give it to the court.
I'm giving.
Pretty, pretty little working and sort of moving. You know, it's all.
Only only difference is the noise that you like next to the class, bringing children out.
Are there questions in sections that we're gonna be cleaning you on the way till the end or?
Um.
You want to get through your summary and then go over those.
Sorry.
Can you make that five feet for all courts?
Yes. You know that?
Yes. Well, I was saying, I'm just saying, it doesn't matter.
Or it's in the top, yeah. Waterfront yards are allowed one accessory building. Okay, do you want to.
No, I want you to.
What you want us to agree with?
Section four two E seven. See in the document, waterfront. Yards are allowed one accessory building at or under two hundred square feet, and an additional building must be. Must be a a applicable requirements for size and number accessory structures. In subsection three.
Because I think the intent was when we talked about. Ajax, I mean. Tubes that we did not want boat houses down by the water. But the idea, if you wanted something in your waterfront yard, it could only be a small structure. Two hundred square feet or less down by the river. We didn't, I don't think the intent was that we wanted to allow them their huge accessory building that they could have. Put that down by the water.
Sure.
Am I wrong?
Well, I like me to view that. I think that is. I think that's the courteous thing you do to the neighbor, but I would say a lot of people have built larger structures because they're trying to push. A jet ski or a fishing boat in there that doesn't fit as well in two hundred square foot, so. Uh, you know, a little bit of that will create a problem.
Because that was.
For me, it doesn't bother me because I'm a building down there and I'm, I tore my building down because.
Right, the discussion is, what if your neighbor, they're a two acre lot, how they can live accessory building, they'd be allowed.
I'm just thinking, really lots.
Two acre lot. So they can put a fifteen hundred square foot.
Hmm.
Accessory building down on their waterfront to store their boat if they wanted, and I don't think.
I don't think that's scary.
That would not be intent.
Right, I've seen a lot of pictures of those.
And they were, yeah.
There's like.
They were sheds.
The majority of them are sheds.
Right, because if you want that, that's the idea of that.
Is there anything there for this about? Fences between joining waterfront properties, or the fence, I don't know, is for blocking view for neighbors?
It it would be a front yard.
It would be.
It'd be a front yard, so that's four.
That is considered a front yard if you're.
Well, they choose it. Because you choose as the order.
No, not on the.
Not on.
Not on the bar. The intent is that we can. I wanna get kind of consensus to on that, the intent is that we handle riverfront. Side lots.
Not river, what?
Waterfront side lots for the purpose of fences as four foot. As a um regulated the same way we do a front yard, maybe that's.
Correct.
Alright, or else you're.
Pretty much.
I don't think that's on the chair.
And yet I don't think so, I I don't, yeah, I think. And I don't go back to it all. The next change that's in here, um this is six one, this is what we just talked about with residential minimum. Um dwelling sizes, we have had a conversation, I thought we changed it to eight hundred, so six hundred, you have to have at least one bedroom, you can't do a uh. A with a closet, you wouldn't move no bedrooms. Any other house, you can't do a studio, you have to have at least one bedroom. And your total square footage has to be eight hundred square foot, we're saying six hundred and fifty square feet plus one hundred and fifty square feet for every bedroom. And that's always, that was something that it can be discussed, didn't get changed, didn't get changed before that, and we gathered it. But then section um two two, this is zoning map changes that have been made, there's um three parcels on, this is one um. Cause in order, in order that I kind of hit you about, there's three parcels. Let's see, Cascade Church, within the Cascade Church P U D that after. Review, they were historically never part of Cascade Church P U D, so. You did?
Till we moved out, it it kind of. So they want to expand for those lots. They go.
Okay. Okay.
That's not open, so we did.
Okay, then um. The other one was the, I believe Michigan Credit Union Building that was marked as a planning unit development, and I have no record of that ever being, it's. It's a fine right, single building, general business.
Basically, it wasn't, it wasn't for painting or anything.
Yeah, I could never find any any documents, so it's just changed. I don't think it's, it it's not really a change, you know, it's not a rezoning, but it needs to be noted, I just wanna make sure everybody knows. Um clarification, the percentage of trees in the block, I'm okay speaking over all of your things, such things that you, you know.
The the tree one, I I can make, yeah, I can make kind of a general. Statement on the tree base.
Yeah.
So the spirit that you're talking about in some community was to um. You know, promote people keeping their trees and not cutting them down and but. The language that we had is some pretty strict language out there now due to a Supreme Court case, and I know this incident, Lakeview Canton was one that was sued. So the attorneys who often represent us in Canton have updated this section to make sure that we're compliant with the law and that we um clearly have. It's such a ability to preserve the trees and not cut them down, we have to make sure that we keep the language in the spirit of of the lawsuit and of the. The findings. So that's where most of that tree um language comes from. So what are we, what are, what are we, what are we settling at as far as? Well, our third is like, I need to go back and look it up, there's something in there about um. We were gonna set a fee to cut down the tree, you can't do that, you have to. You have to, um you actually have to show what the impact of putting that tree down is and actually assess a value to that. It's very hard because you totally put the value, environmental impacts, sometimes with the river, it's actually worth more than the biggest in the middle of a field, right? So there's some point where it was, I don't know all of the, I didn't get a chance to read their final language, but that's.
So if I have wooded lot, I wanna cut the trees down and build a house, or how the?
Well, that would be a.
Shouldn't be a.
Yeah, cause it's not applicable to residential lots under certain, I think it's three acres.
It's a lot, under what?
I believe it was acres, it might be more, it's that, that has not changed, that's not part of the.
So if somebody with a five acre lot, you can't.
No, you can cut up to, I think twenty five percent of the trees on your property to build, anything over that. You.
So the answer to your question, if you have a larger lot, you fall within this, if you have a smaller lot, you don't.
And there are.
And you can build.
But it's not a prohibition, I tell you.
And there's exemptions within it.
Could the driveway winding back in there, you're kind of cutting trees down, it's twenty five percent of the lot, or?
You cut them down.
We gotta cut them down for the driveway.
Right, but they're. So, okay, hang on, three acres is how many square feet?
I don't worry about it, so.
Yeah, I'm a developer, I bought four acres of public trees, I cut down all the trees, you told me when I was.
Yeah, and then I put.
Saying, no. You're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna take a step back there, so you're gonna have to replant a bunch of those and maybe just keep up, and then we're gonna have less.
Exactly.
Four trees less out. Oh, uh it has to be six inches caliper.
Yeah, there's.
There's, you see the whole thing, yeah. Yeah.
So then, I love that, there's a bunch of stuff, five meters to eleven, we also added in section fourteen, which was our um application and and major process. That when someone handles an application, they also have to hand in the treaty plan and their previous legal plan to make sure that's aligned, so we have a way to actually administer this. Um next, on the list on page, uh it would be eleven. Um add language clarified, clarified that highways cannot be considered a front, that was like uh.
Would you carry on?
They used to, they used to.
Yeah, oh. Roman. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Getting to which one are you? Now I am talking about. Page B I six, section six, add language clarified the highway, uh yeah, that's highway cannot be considered a front. Um next section is more added from the constitution of the town's attorney, going all the way down to. Six uh comment from seven twenty one, added by staff, this is um in the change, or in the. Regulations in chapter six one. We had said that the minimum. Area for a general business district, park will be a half acre, and we looked at that after just getting the application in for. The bank on Centennial Park, realized that we require these twenty foot um green space, we require all these things, actually, with firing. Or allowing for a half an acre lot is setting somebody up for failure.
Do you recommend?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry, yeah, over explaining from one half to an acre. This we're building, these are all very not important, um. Section four three J is just replacing building department project, it doesn't matter who makes that decision. Um I don't have to remember what what three two D is, oh, that's also related to the tree stuff, because we said you have to hand in this plan. It's critical. Information staff, added new subsection to allow. Or accessory structures to be located in the front yard in the R C and S P district on lots greater than six acres. Um quick overview of this, we had a request that came in, we did some research and in two thousand, I believe it was two thousand, maybe it was two thousand and ten. There was research done by the planning commission and staff. About adding language for accessory buildings on large lots over six acres in the Fire and Conservation, World Conservation District. Because they're so large, they were having a lot of requests coming in for accessory buildings in this front yard. They were going to the Z B A, they were always approved through the planning department and planning commission, added this language to the ordinance with intent because of. Zoning pieces that were always getting approved, because they had no negative impact on which is. We thought it was good language, we added it. That's. Uh for our last certification and location of fences and a long designated thoroughfare is required to comply with the requirements for fences in front yards. So we added the language about front side yards, I don't know that you want me to go into all the information of how we regulate fences, but we did find that on. Um some of our major thoroughfares, we probably don't want to be able to put a six foot fence up on Thor Apple Road, on Thor Apple. Or Cascade, right on the property line, so. We allow that maybe in a neighborhood where there's like smaller lots and it's not such a negative impact on everyone, that doesn't seem appropriate for the major thoroughfare. We added language so that people can't have a. A fence, a six foot fence all the way down to the nation there as a fine. Um make parties go transparency, oh, we had no requirements, we meant to have transparency requirements for um. Businesses in the Academy Street and all the overlays.
This is people knows.
Yeah.
Apparently, so you know how liquor stores just follow their windows, this is requirements that they cannot rely on.
Yeah, yeah. What is that on the so, can you? Uh that's, it was, it's marked uh D eight one by kind of section five, uh seven five B's. Um time, what does that page say, so? Um it was kind of just an oversight, we always do, prior to the ordinance, there was no transparency requirement, that's pretty typical, you don't want just a building with no windows. We just added language to make sure that it's.
I agree, it's one of the most.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's okay. Okay, everything else is just like capital, change B to whatever, there I, there's nothing um of significance. Yeah, it's just a strerner's error, so a reference that was wrong, a day that was supposed to be them, those types of things, but they're marked here for transparency. Now, window transparency, there's there.
I think I'm reading what?
Pretty good.
You're doing your. I I don't actually, but I'm gonna give it a try, my first question is. Uh four point four B in the chart. It says. Under chickens.
You might give me a page number just so I can put it in my P D.
Well, in my, unfortunately, this is in the older version, but it's four dash fifty four. It it says, it says under units, and it is maybe my misunderstanding of the chart, but maybe that, maybe that's something, it's some. Which is chicken, duck, chicken life, that words, it says one unit equals X animals, this is ten, but then in parentheses, it says maximum of five. Plus that maximum of five.
So you're right, this is confusing, what it is intending to say is. So one animal, the way this, the way the animal section stepped back from them, here's a play of a section, is that the animal section establishes what's called animal unit. And different animals are worth a different number of.
Of humans.
Units, and then you get one unit per acre. So pretty much, you know, the reason is, you can have ten chickens per acre, but in the R one and R two district, you are not allowed to have more than five chickens ever grown in a home, so. That's what it's trying to say, I totally agree, it's not very clear.
I don't remember.
It's all animals made friends according to. Yeah.
This is, I would like, I would like you to try and find a way to clarify then what the maximum of five is trying to say, because it's a little confused.
Five chickens are plenty.
The next.
So I really didn't know where it was.
It's more.
Or ignore this.
The next question I have is in the same section, if you go to um. Uh four point four D three, it says permit required for bees. Do we really need to require a permit for bees, I don't think we've ever had an issue with bees.
But we haven't allowed them in the residential, I'm just gonna say personally.
They're all over the place.
I know, but they're not, currently they're not allowed in the residential.
Yeah, I think they're regulated apparently, I don't.
Uh if it's silent technically, I believe we will counsel site here not allowed.
From theory, I think they're not allowed, if it doesn't call. So my concern, and we can talk about this, is. I think there's a lot of weird requirements with bees, and if I read through this right now and said, oh, I can have all these hives, I'm just gonna go, turn my mind next to you. You have a kid that's athletically allergic to them and I'm not following the rules, I think by offering a permit of some sort, even if it's a ten dollar permit. So I'm in, I know the staff gives them, then, okay, these are the rules you have to follow, so then they have them and they understand. And personally, I think it would be good to do some sort of a registry just in case, I was looking at by the house, and I had a child that was allergic, I would not purchase a home next to me.
So would you, any hive, or would you say if you, if you have more than one or two hives, you have to get it from that?
Uh right.
Okay, I, we kind of feel like if if somebody has eighty hive, well, you know, the, I don't think they should have to get a permit for that.
I think they need to see the rules, it's a ten dollar permit.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be.
It's so we know where they are.
Right, and so they know, they.
They know the rules, yes.
What they are. I think we are, and chickens and bees are like.
They can get involved, like they can do this.
So we are getting to that, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
Chickens are all over the place. Yeah, I think there's just many chickens on there.
I just think to regulate them and and to have a.
We have a section in here, four point two. Questions one and two, talks about retaining wall. I know we had a concern a long time ago, a lot of sixteen foot retaining walls was built and we had nothing to require railing on top. And it was a big heated topic. And so I understand why we wanted to have some rules for retaining walls, but I think maybe we've gone from one extreme to the opposite extremes. My concerns are that we're requiring uh essentially a structural engineer to inspect the wall. Uh, in any retaining wall that's over five feet and height, I believe, is the way this is written.
Same affection. So, sorry, that's.
Four point two one. I don't think that's what.
There is not such thing. I know.
Yeah, it's on page four dash sixty-eight.
Oh.
Different version.
Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Eight, four dash sixty, right, I'll I'll put it at that rate. Um, so anyhow, my concern is that if you wanna have a wall built out of black stone, limestone, boulders, any natural stone. You are gonna have almost an impossible time trying to get a structural engineer to sign off on that, because they don't sign off on natural.
I don't think that we. I don't think this is what we. I like the natural.
I like natural too, and and exactly, that's what I say, I think this is going to be a problem.
I agree with you.
So my 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 thought process on that is that. What we were trying to accomplish is to have railings on really tall walls, so why don't we, because the other thing is too, if you look at our paths. All our our brick walls on our paths with this, we have to have railings involved. Which probably aren't gonna be maintained and covered with vinyl. You know, if we don't cut the stuff on top of those walls into bits, really. And and so I I see this as creating more problems and solving problems. I think we should say if the wall's over ten feet, it needs a railing. And it's at the, maybe the planning commission's discretion or some staff's discretion to to waive or require the these as they see fit. As far as engineering is concerned, we've never had a problem with a wall failing in the township, I don't think we need to add language for that right now.
Material that's out there either, like the material you can use to build retaining walls, it's already been inspected by an engineer and requested by an engineer by the.
If if somebody's, right, if somebody's coming in to build a development or a building or something, that's gonna be part of it. At that point, the building department would require that.
So that actually, the language in here was vetted by our engineer and the reason that it is as it exists now is because the engineer and building. And the the standards that are in here are. What they would trigger as the.
But I'm certain that somebody's got to re-landscape the backyard on the weekend and they go with flower land and buy a a trailer full of of rocks and start building a wall in the yard. Now they've got to get a permit from the township and have an engineer to look at it, and I I don't think that's the spirit of what we're trying to do.
You should take it out. Uh, yeah, I think it doesn't matter if we take it out or not, if there, if if it's legally required by building anyway than they should, I don't think that's in here.
We have an eighteen foot tall wall, no, really, we couldn't force them.
Um, well, we're gonna keep them railings and we're talking about something else.
So retained walls over twirky heights will be designed by a licensed structural engineer or building permit. But they do, we're just getting rid of it, it exists, except the law.
Yeah.
Just being out.
Just be looking at it here.
Yeah.
That's the law.
Cutting holes. Section two.
No, yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to, then kind of make sure that any existing references. I don't think there'll be any, but. I know, yeah, I think we're probably.
Okay, I'll give you a good one, uh, six point nine C, which would be, I'm guessing, like, on in in the book, I'm referencing it's uh page six dash ninety-four. Maybe a little before that for you guys, six point nine C eight C one. I believe uh this is in in reference to Wells, but it reads to me more like would be something that you would find related to subjects, but regardless, if you read this paragraph. Uh, C one, it references a bunch of neighborhoods. Or streets or something, colonies, I don't know what they are. Looks like they're homeowners associations that are not in Cascade Town.
Oh. So.
It's understanding that you are changing your visiting current language. Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah. It's not, it's only one of the subdivision lines, but it's currently touching on.
So then you still go on or.
Which is fine, you wanna, I just wanna make sure you're, that that you're clear that you are changing what's in the current. So if you don't want, if you don't want us cutting.
I don't know, what is.
I have, I I guess I I would need to reread it and see exactly what we'd be cutting out. I thought, I thought those were not soil names, I thought they were neighboring names because it kept referencing associations, so I was thinking of my neighborhood association. I apologize.
And a whole town that.
So.
Yeah, it's like. Yeah.
When you read it, it does.
Yeah. Coming on that, I, we we can do whatever here's want, but this right here puts all of the onus on whoever wants to develop all the costs. It just kind of buys that we don't wanna deal with and try and negotiate. This right here says, if you do this, you pay for it, if you want this, you pay for it, and we have to work with the county, the health department, the plant, you know, some of the engineering firm. Or how to put it there, uh. I don't think that there's anything wrong with this. Because if you did have somebody came in and wanted to create a lot of site, they're gonna wanna come and say, well, you can run by water.
So we might as well, it's doing the opposite of not taking something out, we don't have to actually reinforcing that it's not a problem.
That's that's my. If we're gonna. Asking the questions. Uh, okay. Around seven dash one hundred, section seven twenty-five. B two B. Talks about rooftop patio.
B.
It says it does. It's it's.
Seven point one?
Seven point five, section seven point five. B two B rooftop patio space that is either accessible from all the dwelling units and included as part of a restroom. Let's say, wh- why does it have to be? A uh required that it's a fourth story and B that everybody, why are we dictating who has access to it?
So. Uh, I guess number one, we should get rid of the fourth story reference.
Yes.
Thank you.
Four stories, so that's a catch.
Thank you.
Uh.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we need to be specific about who has access to a rooftop patio, do we, I mean.
Yeah, because what if it's just, I think we're trying to say it's for more people, like you can't make it just for your condo.
Why not, why not?
Well, is that gonna fall?
Because, because it's a choice of things, developers have to build one of the five things on this list. Other things on the list are like. Outdoor green space, stuff like this, so like if you're replacing.
The reason basically rooftop patio is gonna be forever. To the fourth, fourth block.
And B also, take out the fourth story bit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, for sure, that's a good question.
Okay, then uh moving on to the law, I'm skipping some things here, you guys, you'd be proud of me. Um. Oh, you're. Eight point six, okay, we already addressed that, if you quit that, uh. Okay, eight point three, which is gonna be up here like page eight dash one oh six or something. Um, eight point three, letter C three F, eight point three, C three F. It talks about private roads. Uh, and the name being assigned, the Kikang Road Commission really approves road names, we don't really do that. I don't think we have the capability to really do that effectively.
Because it references planning commission? Then they must give you, it's required to plan.
And then the bigger problem, it talks about the address being assigned by the U S Postal Service, that is not accurate either, the Road Commission assigns these. Street addresses, not the postal office, the postal office will tell you where to put the mailbox, but they won't assign you the address.
Uh, oh, yeah, that's that's a good correction, I do wanna talk about the second. Oh wait, is it?
The, I think that there's like, yeah, I think.
I do wanna talk about the second thing, which I, if you would like to cut, that's fine, but I do wanna explain the logic behind that. This is intended to be above and beyond. The naming uh the the naming process with the Road Commission, because.
Well, the the.
The thought is that if there are new roads created within Cascade Village, you want their names to be reflective of your culture and heritage and what you want. And not just what the Road Commission will approve, but anything that isn't confusing.
I'm not debating that, my concern is the way you have this footage is the name is assigned by the U S Postal Office.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
And that's.
If second or if it's saying the planning commission is.
I have no problem with that.
The elements for hearing it, it's not confusing with someone. Yours is.
They'll allow more stuff than even what we would want.
Right.
Yeah.
Long street name.
You're gonna know a street name that somebody else already got.
No, I know, they would know that, it goes to us first.
Yep.
If it comes to us, how about this? Uh. No, don't say anything about her name.
And the portrait name is inside your.
You're not gonna get me a street.
No, so we're also not gonna get some other things, yeah, discuss them. Because even if they broke.
Section nine point two, good C, two point one.
Nine point two, uh.
Uh.
C.
C, two point one. But I guess it wouldn't be one, it'd be L, I'm sorry, it's L, um. It says trash, it's titled trash, and this was in reference to barn venues. And it says like the event permit holder shall require that every event remove all trash associated with the event within one business day after the conclusion of the event, make step. The next step is I have a problem with. There's still be no permanent dumpster maintained or used on the property.
Well.
Why?
Cause you don't.
If anybody can have a dumpster on the property, why are we preventing a guy who decides to have a a venue with weddings from having a dumpster, but we're requiring him to throw everything away within a day, but he can't have a dumpster?
Let's be, definitely not dumpsters, like we allow.
We're so, obviously, we are talking about in the agricultural area. Now, this is for a wedding barn or something, you know.
And you, it's good for people that have major.
You're probably right that this is just over.
It is.
And it may be something, should say something more like, your, the dumpster shall be residential scale.
Yes.
Or something of that nature, because if you have a, if you wanna put a commercial dumpster out, there's probably one out the window for Prater next.
Yeah.
It's gonna have a fence around it and a concrete pad and it's gonna be big metal and be lifted out of those like things.
Well, when you drive over in that part of the.
The whole idea is.
There are people with dumpsters like that out there now.
And we, we, we can also cut it, I'm just saying the logic behind it is. A wedding barn is a farm first and foremost, not a wedding thing.
So how.
Yeah.
And this is one of the ways we try to get.
How about if you say, actually, if there's other break, the dumpster, whatever, the set of. Okay, regulated within the zoning of.
Something or building. It's usually in here.
Requirements for.
Personally, what if I'm.
County have have requirements.
The emphasis is that it is a barn first, that a wedding, that you got a wedding.
A big, a big scale and that we don't allow people to. Prep food there, so they should, because here.
If I have a barn that doesn't be weddings and I can have a dumpster, I can't have a dumpster if I do weddings.
That's.
Like.
When you tell them you live in the.
Well, they just. I'm just saying, you shouldn't limit them to what their neighbor can already have, let's just say have.
That's a good, sure, that's a good whole.
Enough of the. Right.
Yeah, you need to start.
So.
Just add that any dumpster, any trash.
It must be the fire. Let's.
Must be trash.
But I do appreciate the level. The other stuff in some. Oh my god. It's that was in the right. Phase.
Now, where are. Can I pick one real quick? Sure, go on. All right, this one is gonna give a little preamble, so my apologies in advance on this, the fourteen dot two, our page fourteen dash two one three. We had a long-serving planning director do two things. Out of the involved.
There is it again?
Fourteen dash two one three, section fourteen dot two. We had a longstanding uh planning director. That were years ago, complete a call from a gentleman who wanted to put a word in. And he looked at the zoning and said, that's acceptable. We also had him do a minor amendment to a P U D. Around a slight uh. Retaining wall, uh, which led to a lot of litigation. Through that litigation, we formed the Roundville Subcommittee. And made recommendation, and one of the recommendations that we made that I'm going to. Make in here is that the director have no decision-making authority without discussing it with the chairman. Of the planning commission, and if the two cannot come to some consensus. It would go uh directly to the planning. Make a decision. I'm doing this to protect our current planning director, whoever the planning director is, but also I want an elected or an appointed. Officially handling those decisions. But that's my. I'll usually agree with it. We did do a lot of work and research on this, the committee arrived and. The one.
Um, okay, so.
I mean, you're right, this is the minor, I guess it would be, I'm talking about the zoning review, I'm talking about the site plan review, the administrative one.
So.
This was a minor amendment to a P U D, and what I would recommend is when these things come up, that the planning director have a conversation with the. Uh, chairman of the planning commission, if they're not able to vice chairman, get consensus, if they can't. Goes with the planning mission.
Uh, so.
Was discussed to the planning commission, I think, at the next.
Well, I can talk about how we, Brian and I did this, but.
Play deeper. And I think it's that simple, but I mean, I and I would probably talk once a week, and I think it's a, it's a healthy thing and um and will also protect our staff. These, they're not gonna decision-making capacity they are in the.
Days on between the application of the.
Absolutely, we're absolutely right, because the problem is then the resident that's upset about the decision that, say, the 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 staff member made. They get a group to go after them with pitchforks and rakes and. And it's. and it's better to have them be able to say, hey, the decision, the staff, that's the decision, the consensus is that. And then you don't always look at like the evil person.
Although part of your job is to.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, I'll say this. A zoning review as defined, which is now defined in, it's never been in Arizona before, and I've spent a lot of time trying to try to like write up this process because I think it was lacking in, in that's, and that's why it was. A zoning review is something that usually is elevated from the planning director to the zoning, um, administrator. And we have a process for that now. The zoning review is something that's done. Clear here, not only what they are, but what falls within those bounds that that actually gets out. I don't see how in like every day would be necessary. We meet with the planning, uh, chair and vice chair the Monday before every planning commission. And in that, we have a list of the administrative site plan reviews, the land divisions, and all planning commission and items that go to the board, uh, on a high level. And I look through that with them and say, here's what's coming, here's what's going on, here's what we accrue, nothing big, um.
All right, so do you know what if I was a bad guy and had, you know, worst case scenario, not what you do now?
Um, what if it's not her?
Sure, sure.
She's telling, I actually respectfully disagree and talk daily and have a consensus and document it.
I mean, so and so. So there needs to be some type of communication that comes down so that everybody's on the same page both have.
Should we look at their review, their definitions that now exist in? And see if you guys.
Well, maybe, maybe it could be.
I don't have any problem with this, but all about everybody covering some. Got somebody that says and checks and balances, but I wish for a random of this. More like that, and then we're actually.
That history because most units don't.
But it does, that's the problem.
So we can, we can.
Staff time, we're requiring that you fill out this form and pay the township a hundred and fifty dollars for the work being done. There's no. We're not approving anything. We're looking into historical files and writing a report that says what historical values the township takes on it.
I, I.
I don't.
I, I think that I see where both sides are coming from. And I think what we should do is I think your definition is too tight, cause that's more of a policy than it is like the zoning. Um, I think we refer to a policy that will be generated.
So you don't want changes in this document?
Well, I don't want policy written into law. That's not like, it's like when I bring you guys ordinances or things. Like, we don't approve the how, like, you wanna approve the law that then refers back to a policy.
So the policy would state that the director can't approve it until these things happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like a reference to the policy in the document, but that's.
Yes, because then let's say I'll decide that the policy is overly cumbersome.
Then we can adjust.
We wanna, it's even, we have some changing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Wonderful. Next minute. So what I'm gonna say is that we will run with this, we will track, because I can understand where everybody's trying to come back.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure that all of a sudden you guys do the report, it's like, holy crap, Jay, why don't I work on this with you directly and then you can send on the output?
That sounds like, I do think, Andrea, if it's a phone call and you're just verifying something over the phone verbally, I, I can live with that, right? Like, but if you're doing something in writing, I want somebody's finger print.
So like the other thing, like says somebody wants to build a deck, they come in and they get it, and they apply for a deck.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah. Do the building part. She reviews that to make sure it meets the setback requirements.
Yep.
So you're saying you want that to go to the planning.
Is she sending something in writing to them?
No, no, to the applicant?
Yes.
Maybe, if I have more questions, it's not an issue, but I might say, I need more information.
No.
Well, then, then at that level, if, if she's communicating and writing to the applicant, I want the finger print.
Well, let me just verify, cause we don't communicate back in writing that way.
Yes.
We have more questions and wanna verify something, it gets approved and via S and N.
That's fine, that's a safer process. I'm saying if it's out of loop, right, where she is, add additional questions, yes.
Okay. I think you guys can work on this.
That's what I'm saying, I'll work with them.
Okay, we'll get there, cause I understand the spirit of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was a great policy over the time.
Yeah.
I thought that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
The ordinance language then, I'll suggest the township will develop an administrative policy to ensure planning commission chair oversight of director decisions.
And we're not saying oversight, I think you're just saying we're directing a policy.
Review, maybe just review?
Need anything in the zoning ordinance on us?
We need to draw, we need something that states if there's a policy.
I, I agree with that, because I think if it says, you can hear it says director and you guys come up with a system and there's a different chair, or you're not even sharing, Chris.
Yeah.
Right.
Then, yeah, then there's, there's different chair and different planning director, it doesn't say anything in here
I agree.
that one or the other is gonna be like, screw that.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying I don't wanna do that specifically.
Or not knowing anything about it.
Or they're not gonna know, yeah.
Let's just reference the policy, that, you know, the director's approval will be based on the policy of the township. That's, that's simple, that's clear, yes.
Yeah, we just like.
There's a good possibility. No, we don't need to be specific in the, in the.
Hurry up, one more.
Hurry up.
This is a really light one, nine point three L one.
I have no idea.
Which I think is probably near page nine dash one thirty four. It's section nine point three L one. The linkman says an adult foster care facility with the approved capacity for receive at least thirteen, but not more than twenty, blah, 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 blah.
Receiving.
I'm pretty sure that there's a table there.
Thank you.
Nine. That's nine point three L, L one, it's just a table. Nine point.
Three L one.
U. Need.
Nine.
Nine point four.
It's totally for L, doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah, that nine point four U G, I think G needs to be struck, it's about dumpster rules again, and we've covered that with separate category.
Nine point four U.
G.
It's just the dumpster thing showing that again, that we've said several laws in the committee that we've been believing. It's, it gives specific dumpster rules for car wash, and I don't think that's the goal. You can't apply that what everybody else applies to.
Right.
Uh, nine point four Y two B. This one concerns me, um.
Can you please say the number one more time?
Nine point four Y two B is a void.
Is it modern vehicle fields?
It is, it talks specifically about, uh, the truck stop. And my concern is, I don't really wanna emphasis on the truck stop, and I don't wanna put a lot of the conversation there right now. But when I, when I went, when we were talking to QuickTrip, I went and visited a bunch of their establishments. And one of the things that I noticed a lot of them had is they had rules with signs about parking. And I think that we should put in here something that says there's a four-hour parking limit or something, because we don't want somebody coming on an application for overnight parking. I think we all talked about that.
Yeah.
So I think this would be the spot to maybe have something that says, there's, there's, you know, this establishment shall have a limit to allowing me to park, like four hours, two hours, I, I don't care. I just think we could have that somehow.
Can't be overnight.
Can't be overnight. Overnight parking is prohibited.
What's the section number again, for me? That's not.
Nine point four Y two B is a void.
Y two B, uh, parking.
Need someone for the limitation on that.
But it should be a rule.
Please.
Sorry, I'm just putting.
You are twenty years.
And I'll put in comments, so it's easy to find.
Is that it?
That's it. If you want me to make a motion return as well.
No, I just wanna double check. Any?
Yeah.
And, and remember this is coming back.
Mm-hmm.
It's not like this is our final.
Well, I'll read this version again.
Yeah, I know.
Come up a little. Hey, wait.
Which is how it works, but, and I think that's what we need to spell.
I do have a question. The board introductions on your, is that eight twenty seven?
Mm-hmm. Whatever.
Hold on a minute.
Well, no, there were two weeks. Yeah.
Twenty seven is important.
Yeah, twenty seven.
That's what's happening, that's the twenty first.
Okay.
Biologists. Good capture.
Um. Eight upload.
So before, the, the, just to talk through, planning commission is gonna see this the week before that.
Eighteenth, right?
The eighteenth, um, we have more comments from them or from the public at that point. Do we want to do a work session prior to the meeting on the twenty seventh?
I think we should.
To go through anything that could be final?
Like you just said, I think, you know, this last version, yeah, and I think just to go through the little.
We're all in favor, we're all in favor.
We do it the week of the twenty fifth? I haven't kind of like a week anymore.
That would be the week.
Yeah, do it right before the work session.
So the date on the twenty seventh?
Oh, the date.
Oh, that's just doing it five, for five thirty. Is that what you're talking about?
Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking maybe do a quick day or so before, so you guys have time to put it in for summary for the board meetings.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should do it on the twenty fifth then?
Twenty, that's the twenty sixth, twenty fifth is Monday, twenty sixth.
I think twenty fifth, just give us a little more time.
Is there, is there a D C meeting that week?
I'm not very.
No.
It's the week before that.
I can do that. I can do it on the twenty.
Eight twenty.
Twenty fifth.
Eight point five.
Eight twenty five.
What time?
Five, the five o'clock work for everybody?
Yeah.
Starting.
So five o'clock back here on the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Twenty five.
They really bring.
Yeah, I was about to say, let me.
Don't last forever, that's how it works.
Would you prefer to go first?
So when you give us the next version?
Yeah.
Can you leave all that in there and add yet another color? So we see the next set of changes?
Next version, yeah, I think we got, so, um.
Yeah, we can go with the.
I, I've made a list of all the changes tonight. I highlighted them in blue as I was going. I could change that color to something else so that we know what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause blue is already painted, so yeah, we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
That would be really helpful. No, I think, think it is.
I had one question that finally landed, you know, fifty year buyback. What about that?
Until we ask.
Um, what do you guys want it to be? That was, that came straight out of the draft ordinance of the attorneys, that's never been considered before.
Yeah, so.
Why, why would they, what happens if the county doesn't have that?
Section six.
Well, yeah, if the draft ordinance, if they ask for, for me to. Are we, are we just remove the buyback? Completely.
I wonder, really, have we?
Yeah.
Well, you can.
I mean, it's.
It's. If it was, if I think we had that.
If there's some other law that applies still applies, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's super soon.
I think.
You are in the why.
I think, I believe Andrea and I met with the attorney on this couple of years ago, and asked the same question, and they said, you don't have to have that.
It's triggered.
Oh, let's get rid of it.
Where is that? Well, farming preservation, six.
We'll turn around if we get our hand put up.
Okay, yeah.
Wait, yeah, what is it?
First of development rights, six, seven. I don't know exactly where it is for the buyback.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Section six, seven.
Got it. I just wanna make sure I don't lose anything.
I know. Yeah.
Oh, we have the right cap. Give time.
I think we all should be very proud of your.
Does it say buyback?
I don't think it does say buyback. It's not the wording.
It's hard to find it.
Purpose of.
Uh.
Oh, this is return of develop.
The charge of development.
Return of development, this is what it says, got it, okay.
Yeah.
You know anything about that, Chris?
I don't know.
Oh, the fifty year thing?
Well, the attorneys.
Uh, yeah, I don't know where they, where. I, yeah.
What's the, what's the point if you have a fifty year? What's the point if you have a fifty-year? Exactly.
I, I, you, you might wanna ask your attorney that, because it is possible.
That would be really valuable, that.
Right, it might.
No, I, in all seriousness, no, I, I don't know this, but I think it is possible if the answer is, well, it was worth X dollars in twenty twenty-five, and twenty seventy-five it's worth, and now you have to compensate them for all that growth and you didn't get, right? I, I don't know that, but you might wanna check with your attorneys.
Well, just shake it out, if we got a problem, we'll put it there.
Yeah, I think the answer.
It's twenty seventy-five's problem, right?
Exactly.
So.
And your local even got to that point.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just literally saying it's perpetuity.
Yeah.
And all the rest, removing everything else.
It doesn't say, oh, yeah, no, it'd be difficult to.
It's not just perpetuity, it's just unspoken.
Yeah.
There, there's a, there's a.
So I should get rid of the whole subsection H.
Get rid of it.
Yes.
Unless there's some other part of it.
So, I, you guys won't.
Well, just say.
Okay, yeah, highlight it, just say.
The.
Have it be yellow.
Yeah, we don't want.
So they don't want.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I think it's important, though, to memorialize that it is.
Oh.
It is not, there is not a set, date, like, a clock, and.
Because if it's not a set date, then maybe that means they can do it in.
Right, so someone can't.
Yeah.
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 All right.
Cause that's how.
Okay, so we're just gonna be relieving that far and removing the rest.
Yeah.
Should we put on your years or no? You know what, now they're.
What are you putting in? We're not putting in it, we're taking it out.
That you are gonna have to pay everything, Timmy.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna put your name right in.
They also ran the.
It's the Timmy by.
Pay attention.
It's cool.
Who, okay.
Oh, yeah, actually, with the staff force, or anything else.
That's in Hazel.
That's not, not on our, down there. Don't we have to have them?
It's.
Is it required?
Let's make a.
It is required.
No potion for nothing, we gotta see.
Potion for public comment.
Yeah. And it requires any public comment, virtually, anyone watching virtually?
No one, mine.
Robert, anything?
No.
Good enough.
He's as tired as we are.
No, we got.
Who was sitting back? Did we know who that was?
Yeah.
Karen Ryan.
Oh, got it.
And who was the other?
They have the.
D D.